And nine.
We did get a little lost.
There's two different ones. One is.
Hi, how are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Call the meeting order and you have a pledge to the flag. We start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll move the approval of the majority. I'll second. If you can, as a discussion. Are there some papers? Please say aye. Aye. We have some ceremonial duties this morning.
In other words, get out of the way, Mr. Steiner, right?
Stay right there.
Well.
This is for Autism Awareness Day, and so if.
Yes.
I'm thinking that somehow we'd like to get you on camera next.
Yes.
You almost have to come back here.
Sure, no problem.
I have my phone with me as well.
Sure.
On Facebook and whatnot.
And you do have blue on.
Of course I have blue on. It's so funny, I purchased a whole bunch of blue, and they're like, you must really like blue. I'm like, I do really like blue.
No, I knew that today was the blue day, I thought. Come on up. Group hug.
Yay, we're friendly.
Right.
Oh, certainly. I have it too. Proclamation, this is for the Portage County Autism Awareness Day. Whereas autism affects the behavior and brain development of millions of people worldwide, and autism spectrum disorders are becoming increasingly common. And whereas, in recognition of the growing needs of the worldwide autistic community, and to raise awareness about autism spectrum disorders, and the need to provide services to individuals and families who are affected, the United Nations has sanctioned April the 2nd as World Autism Awareness Day, and.
And whereas Autism Speaks, an organization dedicated to funding research on autism and advocating for the needs of individuals with autism and their families, promotes the awareness of autism worldwide, and whereas the light of the growing impact of autism spectrum disorders and the need for greater awareness, Autism Speaks holds their Lights It Up Blue campaign on World Autism Awareness Day, designed to increase awareness about autism by asking participating organizations to turn their lights blue. Now therefore be it.
Resolve that in recognition of World Autism Awareness Day, the Portage County Board of Commissioners encourages all employees and citizens to light it up blue. To support Autism Speaks in their awareness efforts by using blue lighting for homes and buildings, or to wear blue to show support for families as they manage the burdens that autism presents, and be it further resolved, that the Portage County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2014, as Autism Awareness Day in Portage County.
I'd like to present the proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get a picture, sure.
Wait a minute. Ready? Good.
We're ready. Thank you. Thank you. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. I love it, all women.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
You probably know we're the first in the state.
I did not know that, no. When I had run up on the county, I knew that there were three women, which is always great.
She's the only one in the state that occurs.
Oh, make sure to put that when I put some information out there on the county.
Great, great.
Thank you very much, we truly appreciate it. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I want you. You and I, you know.
Oh, now I need to get her memo.
The pink memo. What's the.
For helping her.
The blue, like Poo from Ants.
There we go. Oh, I have some on my car, I'll run it back in. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to pull up here.
We'll move the Portage County Commissioners meeting into the Portage County Solid Waste Management District Commissioners meeting. I will begin with you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I need to get your real packet out here.
I will move approval of the last 23 minutes. I will second. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, it's me. Resolution, the first one is to approve the bills as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Finance.
Who to approve the bills?
I second.
Is there discussion? Do we have a roll call?
Maureen.
Yes.
Sabrina. Yes.
Item B is journal voucher approval.
I will move to accept the journal vouchers.
I will second. Is there discussion? We have a roll call.
Maureen.
Maureen.
Sabrina. Yes.
Yes.
Item C, approve the then and now certification as presented by the county auditor.
Who to accept the then and now?
I will second.
Is there discussion?
There are two items, and I apologize that they're not on.
With the then and now?
No.
We have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm anxious to keep you on schedule, I'm sorry.
Okay, all in favor of the then and now, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries now, we're ready.
Thank you, ma'am. Real quickly, and I'm just going to touch on this briefly, because I did not want to overstep my boundaries, but I'm extending an offer through the board to the mayor of Garrettsville, if he needs any help with demolition debris, clearing anything like that, please have him contact me. We can't do that, but I could probably put him in contact with several companies who may be able to help him out. So, I figured the last thing he needed was one more person up there getting in his way, but please contact him and tell Mayor Patrick if he needs something, contact my office, you know, cellphone or whatever, so.
Would you like to send the letter directly from here?
Well, what I was going to do, if you would like, I would just call him instead of sending a letter, just tell him that if you need help, we're here, kind of thing. And then Denise has someone she'd like to introduce.
Yeah, I have two things. One, with your autism awareness, I was wondering, I know you have the public bulletin board downstairs, I was wondering who I talked to about putting up announcement. I have a great grandson, my stepdaughter's grandson, who has cerebral palsy, and there's a fundraiser spaghetti dinner, Happy Days in May, and I was just wondering if I could put this up in the end of public, and I wasn't sure who to talk to.
There's his time there just coming up. Put it, okay. Anywhere else, if you want. Florida's one, the third floor as well.
Oh, okay, thank you very much, perfect. Who I'd like to introduce is Tim Piro. Tim, these are our Board of Commissioners, Maureen Frederick, Kathleen Chandler, and Sabrina Bennett.
Hi.
How are you?
Tim is our newest Assistant Prosecutor in the Civil Division. He has been with the prosecutor's office for several years in municipal court. He is rotating to the Civil Division, and one of the individuals or entities he's going to represent is the solid waste district, and it's perfect, he has a master's in environmental science.
Oh, great.
From Duke. I always say a real school, Duke, and they can't play basketball.
No basketball.
And so that's one of the entities he's going to be representing, so we just wanted to bring and have him observe what we do, and introduce you to him again.
How do you spell your last name?
Piro, P-I-E-R-O.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Journal entries now. Received the 2013 solid waste annual report as presented by the Portage County Health Department. I have reviewed this, to the best of my recollection, this is the first time I've received this, and I'm glad. It's just basically a synopsis of month by month, the calls that they've received for, whether it's nuisance complaints or consultant consultation for those complaints, and kind of give you a running total of where they're at for the year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You wish to have any executive session?
Yes, ma'am. It is for personnel issues and legal.
I will so move for executive session for personnel issues. Is that dismissal of discipline?
Personnel and legal issues.
Other than employee discipline, yes.
Yeah, I forgot to put that up front. Yeah, employee discipline.
Yes.
I will second. Do we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Sabrina? Yes.
Kathleen? Yes.
That's right.
No div and I were. Move to exit, okay?
I hope you're up next, huh?
Two minutes.
Thank you, I'll get you that information. I'll send it to you in our office.
I'll move to exit executive session.
I'll second.
Okay, who have a roll call?
Maureen.
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Kathleen? Yes. Is there action coming out?
No action.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners, have a good day, and I will call Mayor Patrick upon my return to the district.
I'll move for journal.
Yeah. The annual report.
And there's a second, is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we're adjourned. We'll move back now to the county commissioners meeting, and we're ready for the prosecutor's report.
Yeah, I was going to start with the sideways sheet. Actually, the majority of what I have is exec session material, but I'll go through a few things first before we get there. Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. With respect to number one, this was the local guidance memo, this was the EMA grant. I did have a pretty lengthy conversation with Annette, and essentially, this grant has not been denied yet. It's been explained to me that there are, since it's a reimbursable grant, there are two or three, there's like three levels of review that reimbursement invoice goes through, it's been through two, it hasn't been through the third yet, so it actually hasn't been denied yet.
Okay.
So, when we get that information, if it is denied, we will begin that reconsideration or appeal process. Number two is part of executive session, number three and four are pending, that was to allow the SIR assessment for 30 years or an extended period, and the RLF, use of RLF by the NDS, but that legal opinion, I've got to get to that yet. Number five was also exec session, and number six is kind of ongoing, that is that property in Brady Lake that's, the house is not on within the property. In my correspondence list, the only thing that is not executive session would be number three. You had asked me regarding the dog wardens carrying weapons or firearms, and I did find, I was proud of myself that I found that 1995 opinion, and got that to you, so it is your policy that dictates whether or not they carry this, and of course, if you, you need to assess a lot of things, you're aware of those things better than I probably, so I did find the opinion.
So therefore, we are going to go into executive session, but before we do that, may I ask, on number six, the infamous ongoing property issue of the Brady Lake property?
Well, actually, on that one, I don't have to do that one in exec session.
Oh.
In reality, DVS, Joanne is coming to you at some point with the resolution to declare them as in default, and the contract terminated.
I think she means Brady Lake. You mean number six on your.
No, no, the Brady Lake.
Oh, the Brady Lake, I'm sorry, I thought you were.
We had talked about it, in the sense of us just going ahead and offering it, putting a for sale sign, that that would prompt action.
It may, it may create legal problems because somebody else's house is on our property.
Yeah, you're going to have a rough time passing a title search if you.
But I thought we made one more effort to get the owner to contact us, because all efforts have failed so far, and we've gone way beyond our responsibilities. We knocked on doors, we tried to talk to people, we've left messages at the door, we've called, left messages, and we're being completely ignored, and so I think make one more effort, and if we don't, then we should do something legally to force them to answer us.
We'll do something. Are you familiar with that?
Actually, I thought we had discussed it in.
My training.
In the last resort, I was going to be to notify them that we are going to sell the property, and that that's.
The gentleman.
Some action.
My Byerly.
Byerly is deceased.
She says, we go out there again.
But they've never done the.
As soon as.
They've never done the.
Probably now, I think.
Not the, even, or the affidavit?
And Sandy Byerly is the chief secretary. You know, she's not responding at all.
She rents this out, so I don't know if they've ever made contact with her.
John's house.
I think you're right.
That's why I thought.
For sale sign.
And he's on.
Are we talking about the same thing?
Yeah.
Sorry.
The individual who owns the house, yeah, I'm sorry, the individual who actually, I know this is a rental property, but the individual who owns the house works for the city of Urbana, so maybe that would be a way to.
She's the chief secretary at the Urbana Police Department.
Really?
Yeah, because I'm going to go grab those deeds real quick, I did pull those deeds, I'm off to grab them.
Well, we may have a.
It's nice to have an expert on it, isn't it?
That is good, yeah.
I'm not sure I know how to pull deeds these days with everything computerized.
Well, that's one way to get in touch with her.
Yes. I didn't realize, that's what, I didn't realize.
Sabrina, your super detective skills.
Actually, it was put in her name only?
No, it was put into, it went from junior to John Senior.
Could you start just a tiny bit before where you are now, so that we can.
Oh, sure. I was just telling Denise, I pulled, I pulled the property deeds, and it shows that the Byerly property went from their son to John and Sandy Byerly, and then, so that's where that one sits.
And that's a joint survivorship deed?
Let me look here and see.
So it's been transferred at one point? What was the date?
The original owner was their son.
Oh, long story, okay.
Yeah, the original owner was their son. That was transferred on February 13th, 1997.
Nineteen?
Wait, that can't be right. Oh, yeah, 1997.
That sounds about right, yeah.
So the information that we have is not.
No, it is, because now, it is in the, it is John, it is in Mr. and Mrs. Byerly, Mr. Senior's name now.
But Senior's name, I got to double check.
And he died.
Yeah, and Senior has.
But I thought we were told that it was not in her name.
No, it's in, it wasn't in her name only, as far as I knew, it was in both of their names. Either a probate had not been filed, which would be dependent on the number of other assets they had, or if it's a joint survivorship deed, she had not done the.
The affidavit.
The affidavit, that you can, to put it completely in her name.
I think we should assign this to Sabrina.
I think she's done some, I think she's done some.
Paul and her, and talk to her, because we want her to understand that she has a house on our property, we're willing to trade properties, so that she can come out better.
Yeah, we were willing to.
We're trying to be nice about all this.
Whatever, either trade properties, or replat, or do whatever it needs to be done to re.
To help her.
Redraw the property line, so everybody's house is on the right property.
And then the Mullins property, that's on hers, right?
Right.
Okay.
Do you have all the backup, or do you have like the maps and things like that?
Yeah, if you don't, give me a call.
A commendable job.
Yeah, and then I, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll follow up with that.
That's great.
Wonderful.
Nice job, Kathleen, nice job there. Be careful what you wish for, Sabrina.
This is great, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
We're really trying to help her, I mean.
Yeah.
The best way to help her is to let it be straightened out.
Yeah. So, I'm ready for.
What precipitated this is we're getting a tax bill, or the county is getting a tax bill, and we would love to sell that property, because we don't need it anymore, so we don't have to pay taxes on it, but.
If she wants to buy the property, that's an option, too.
Yeah, so.
Otherwise, we could, I mean, it would be a nightmare, but we could sell the property, and I'm sure they don't want to see that happen, because their house sits on the property.
Well, if she was willing to buy the property you have.
That's great.
Then we didn't need, we wouldn't even need to redraw the line, we're just simply inclined to deed with what we have.
This couldn't be any more convoluted that, it just couldn't, only could it have.
No, it's a lot like a bar exam question on property. I never thought I'd pay that much, yeah. Should have paid more attention to property, apparently.
Is there a motion to go into exec session?
Right.
No, yes, I will so move for executive session for pending litigation.
And attorney-client privilege communication.
And attorney-client privilege.
I'll second that.
Do we have a roll call, please? Maureen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
That's only if you're wearing the pink today, could you?
Count? You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we come out of executive session.
I'll second. Do we have a roll call, Sabrina?
Yes.
I got a thing?
Yes.
Sabrina should come around.
Yes. What did we do?
The only one was this.
We had something.
This contract.
Pardon?
Actually, there's no action, because they're not going to do anything.
Was there action? We were going to do a journal entry.
You're going to do a journal entry to adopt that license agreement?
No, we're going to do a journal entry to send a letter to the Portage lift. We have, we have, before sending it, we need to confirm the number of lifts that were originally installed by Portage Lift, and if they didn't do all three, then we need to adjust the dollar amount. And so the language that I have written in that we put here is fine. So we'll confer, can you check on that, that one?
Okay.
Congress.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think I will do the same thing.
You had so much you left.
Hi Denise.
How are you today?
I had it there earlier when I was up there. Somebody left that, was it yours? Or did somebody else?
No.
It's in color.
Hey Kathleen, since you're in between, how can I get a van to take computers over
to the new building, to the courthouse, instead of having to use my SUVs, that the seats don't go down flat?
Let's ask Joanne, and we'll figure it out and let you know today. Okay?
Okay, I can go ask her if you don't care.
No, that'd be great, because you're right, you need a.
Well, you know, somebody told the judges that we could use my vehicles, well, that's fine, but they're not as big and they're not as flat. You know, when you take the seats down.
What computers over to the courthouse?
All the new ones.
We have 32.
Yeah, but we ordered, there was an order for.
No, that's taken care of, Kathy.
We took care of that, we met with the judges yesterday. So whatever you're hearing was all messed up, and I don't know why.
Well, I'll check on it, because I haven't heard anything.
You check on something.
Okay, I'll do it. Yeah, because the.
Just don't mess it up, so that we can't get it done. Please, come and talk to me, please, for something.
All right, we'll do that. The issue at hand is that the computers that were ordered for the courthouse are the ones that are outdated, and so when Joanne learned about that, we decided that we're going to pay X number of dollars for computers, we want the latest models, and in addition to that, the latest models are a little tiny bit cheaper than the older models that were ordered. So the older models have been delivered. It's my understanding that Joanne's going to send them back, and when the new models come in, then they're going to be installed. Now there's a conflict between Janet's office and ours evidently, because Janet's saying, well, the old computers are good enough, I mean, the outdated ones are good enough, and if the courts don't want them, then we'll use them somewhere else, but we can't, we only have money to pay for one set of computers that go to the court, and the court is going to pay for those. And so the other ones, if we keep those outdated ones, who else would want them? I mean, they're more expensive by maybe $50 each or something.
These are the expertise, so you've got, or they met.
You know, I'm not quite sure what the difference is, but they're stopping manufacturing of the particular ones they're sending to us in April, that's now.
Yeah.
So those are obsolete, so we want the latest ones. The courthouse was not wired, didn't get fiber optic cable in on time, so that, and we didn't, and Ryan didn't order the computers on time, so that we can put them in, so the solution, as far as we're concerned, is move the ones they have, which are working just fine, over to the new courthouse, and as the new ones come in, then staff will have time to go over there as they have time to get them installed. Now, evidently, Brian is asking for overtime, the amount of close to $11,000 if they need it. Well, I don't want to spend $11,000 overtime if we don't need it, so that's kind of where we are, and there's a real conflict here. I think Janet feels strongly that whatever Ryan ordered, we should use over there, and if they don't want them, we'll use them somewhere else, but we don't have the money to pay for an extra set.
Yeah, I'll pay for it twice.
Yeah, yeah, so. We're running just a little short on time, do you have time to wait?
Do you know, I can come after lunch if you'd like, if that's what.
Well.
You have a backup after receipt.
We really backed up, I don't, we ran it such a session a very long time.
Yeah.
I'm anticipating, yours isn't going to take long at all, right?
I can shorten it. It was going to take.
Why is it going to take less? Well, maybe on the discussion items, could we delay some of those, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
But the rest of it should be easy.
Yeah.
Right. Then maybe have you come back this afternoon, we have time for the discussion.
Do you want to do that? Okay, do you want to go now then on the record?
Yeah. We went out of executive session, why do you're gone? So that's kind of where we are, and there's a real conflict here. I think Janet feels strongly that whatever Ryan ordered, we should use over there, and if they don't want them, we'll use them somewhere else, but we don't have the money to pay for an extra set.
Yeah, I'll pay for it twice.
Yeah, yeah, so. We're running just a little short on time. Do you have time to wait?
Do you know, I can come after lunch if you'd like, if that's what's-
Well, I'll look that up after we receive. We'll really back up. I don't- we ran executive session a very long time. I'm anticipating- yours isn't going to take long at all, right?
I can shorten it. It was going to take long.
Why's it gonna take less? Well, maybe on the discussion items, could we delay some of those, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but the rest of it should be easy.
Yeah.
Right. Then maybe have you come back this afternoon, we have time for the discussion.
Does the discussion want to do that? Okay, do you want to go now then on the record?
Yeah. We went out of executive session while you were gone.
Okay, we're ready for you.
We'll start with the regular buzz- regular agenda resolutions. The first one's the money in the general fund. We needed to pay for reimbursement out of the prosecutor's office, and there wasn't money in the budget for that line item, so we're moving money to there. Yes.
Did you say?
I said.
Um, although, we'll do a roll call, please, Marie?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Kathleen? Yes.
Number two is just basically setting up various projects and grants that have come up from non-general funds.
What's the grant total, three hundred and sixty-four thousand?
Yes.
I will move to amend the non-general fund.
I will second.
Can we have a roll call?
Marie?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Kathleen? Yes.
Number three is taking a cash advance back from the workers' comp year fund into the admin fund. We put it in at the beginning of the year, and then we take it out after the journal gets done.
I will move to cash advance fund, the general fund from Fund eleven oh seven.
Number three, yeah, seven twenty-three.
Okay, I will second.
Okay, we have a roll call, please, Marie?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Kathleen? Yes.
Number four is just a cash advance for the grant that was approved to buy breathing apparatus. We cash advance it, and they buy the equipment, get the reimbursement, and when the reimbursement comes in, we'll pull this back.
Now I will move to cash advance to the general fund, the current debt.
I will second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Marie?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Kathleen? Yes.
And the last was a transfer from the sewer fund to cover the rate portion of some debt. This is the final payment on the debt, and this is to make the final adjustment so that the funding balances correctly.
I will so move to transfer the fund.
I will second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Marie?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Kathleen? Yes.
Uh, I do want- there was an additional item.
Do you want another resolution?
Oh, did we do the journal entry, or did I? This would actually be with the journal entries, so we can talk about it.
Thank you.
And this is-
Is this the same one that's on your list, number one?
No, these are two separate- there'd be two journal entries then. And this is backup that we had actually already gotten. Oh, the first journal entry is just for a reimbursement, expense reimbursement on some project expenses. We need the board's signature, and then BBFM will submit there.
Do we add that to the journal entries if there's no objection?
The second journal entry, Dave Vaughn, I believe he emailed the board and me as well regarding the micro lending program. This sheet is his proposed steps for the micro loans. This is NDS's proposal to replace KRB, who was administering the program. We were kind of waiting to get the small business assistance from Summit Medina, so we could have one big package. However, with the Garrettsville fire, Dave thought it might be timely to maybe put this in place so that we could possibly assist those businesses if needed. I have two possible journal entry versions. The first one is just approving the program overall. The second one, which I prefer, would be just approving the program for the Garrettsville businesses damaged by the fire. And we would also waive eligibility requirements. There's- you have to be in business for three years, or you have to have a business plan, et cetera. And waive those eligibility's, and just let NDS evaluate each business as to whether they're loan-worthy or not, so that if those people need assistance, we could get moving on that.
So I would like to have lunch, at least, to read over this.
That's fine, yes, absolutely.
Maybe we could do them this afternoon?
Yeah.
The first one, we've done already, so that would just be on item two.
And that will be final.
And then on the other items, if they're short reports?
I have- I have- this is the capital request document. We don't even need to talk about it. I wanted the board to look over it anyways, and we can talk about it by next meeting. Yeah, and I call it capital request because we can't possibly fund it all.
We should.
These are- yeah, and in fact, some areas are even blank, where we still need to hash out what would need done. So that's that. The next thing I want the board to look at is some ideas for modifying our budget process. And again, we can discuss these. I want to have a letter ready by next meeting, which would be April second. I'll get that to you ahead of time outlining the budget process. I want to make sure you're comfortable with some of the changes I've made, though, or proposing made. I think we've discussed them. And so that's what this outlines. Again, nothing needs done or said on this today, but if you look it over, then we can talk about it. I think that takes care of what I needed to get done.
These are such vital, essential things, so it is- do we have the time this afternoon? Because I- I do not want to rush through any of this.
First, I'm gonna do one this afternoon, and the other two we're gonna hold for next week. The one we're gonna do this afternoon has to do with the journal entry for the NDS.
So they can handle businesses of yes.
So if we don't have- we should have time this afternoon, otherwise we'll take a recess right now and read them.
Oh, no, no, I mean-
I don't care to pass it without reading it.
No, no, I'm not purporting that we do that, but they're very essential things, and so I would like to do that and spend the time with Todd.
Yeah, and I'll be available for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
So what are you?
Yes.
We'll be in speed dial.
Thank you.
Would you like to come up?
All right, well, I really didn't mean to bring this large basket of retail items here. We're doing a fundraiser, and Judy in the- in the thing wanted to- I had told her, we had chatted about it, and she said, oh, I want to see your cards. So then I- so I brought them all, and we thought we could just leave them up there, and then we thought, we better check with you if it's okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we can do that.
All right, that's okay.
We can check and find out, but I'm not sure we're allowed to do that.
Yeah, I did- it seems a little, you know- Like not- like it might not be a good idea. It's not a big deal compared to all the other stuff you're doing.
No, we know. We just wanted to ensure that we have the right information. She wanted to sell some items by putting them up on the front office, and I don't know that we're allowed to do that, and I thought we should check first.
It's a fundraiser for us, so, you know, it might look a little funny. We don't want to do anything else.
Well, I don't know if we can or not, because I- we have to check with Denise to confirm.
No, we do, uh, people, mostly staff, do bring in candy bars.
I know.
I mean, for the-
But you know what? They're responsible for the money and all that.
No, I'm just saying, we-
And we're not staff.
I'm trying to think what other thing we sell. Oh, we don't sell goose, Scott cookies.
You don't want to open the door to every little group's little, you know, keychains, and who knows what else.
I mean, we're supportive, it's just whether or not we're allowed.
Well, when you have time and you find out, let me know, and when you don't have time, it's totally okay. Not a big deal. Least deal of the day.
Okay. Okay, we're requesting today, or asking you if you'd be willing to write a letter to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, asking them, and you're gonna get a handout, so if you don't- didn't want to take notes, to release all micro seismic data for northeastern Ohio to the public, especially crucial data regarding events not felt at the surface. So what this is really about is there are these fixed locations around the state, under the auspices of the ODNR, that assess earthquake events, seismic events.
Is this not public record already?
Uh, no, they're not releasing it. We think it should be public record, and they're not allowing it to be public record. The fixed- the fixed seismic measurement equipment, like at Youngstown State, Kent State, Case Western Reserve, those are fixed, and that's under what's called Ohio Size. That's a website, and you can go there, and you can see what happened yesterday. But they have portable seismic, uh, equipment that is under the auspices of the underground injection well program. It's like a different arm of the ODNR. They are the ones that measure the micro seismic events. And as it has come to light over time, before the four-point earthquake in Youngstown, there were something like a hundred and nine- there was a swarm of small micro seismic events indicating something was coming. But since that wasn't released, then there was no way for geologists to say, well, wow, this is- something's happening. We're having a hundred and nine micro seismic events, let's see. So what the scientists and the geologists want, especially from, I think, Youngstown State University, they want this- they want the ODNR to make this micro seismic portably- portable equipment measurement data available to the public. And the reason they want it is because, and, you know, I don't want to just lengthen this out, because this is all on here.
What is it? The machine is called a portable what?
A portable equipment that measures-
In other words, the fixed places are public information?
Yes, you can go right onto Ohio Size and see it.
So we would like to have added to the website the information from the portable equipment?
Yes. And that is under the aegis of a different part of the ODNR. It's from- it's from the injection well part.
Division, the division?
Division, program. And that's not the same as the earthquake division.
Okay.
So-
Fixed ones are for earthquakes.
And all- and all of that, but the- but the portable ones, I'm assuming, they would take, and I don't know enough about this, to the sites or whatever, to say, is this a site that is becoming, or that should be, where we should anticipate a problem? And the reason, one reason this is all coming up is because now of these nineteen thousand vertical wells predicted to press to get in the next decade, it just feels to us that Portage County is in the bull's eye, and that there's gonna be huge pressure on Portage to take- to permit more injection wells, to convert vertical wells that aren't profitable, to convert hydrofract wells that aren't profitable, or to reopen abandoned wells. So Portage County seems to me in the bull's eye, and it's another one of these things where without understanding and anticipating how things are connected underneath our feet, and going ahead and allowing more and more injection wells, without anticipating earthquake problems, we are really putting water at risk. We're really putting water at risk because of-
So the question is, will the commissioners release a letter?
That is the question.
Making the request, would you like to have us get a draft of the letter and then consider it at that time?
I was gonna also offer, would you like me to put into one paragraph the- all the correct information, the Ohio Revote Advice Code regarding the underground injection well information and everything, so that you guys aren't having to look that all up?
That's right, and then if you could get that to Deb, and Deb, could you draft a letter and then bring it back to us for our consideration? You want to do that?
Yeah, okay. Okay, so-
And Deb, you can ask them if they will make that on the record?
Yeah.
You want me to pass them off down?
Yeah, okay. Those are the two for you guys on that side. So now, when I was here last year, and we had no evidence, or we were told we had no actual- for true evidence of water contamination, I brought in articles, and I'm not gonna even speak to it, because you guys all know about it, but this article that I'm gonna give you for your files or whatever, gives you information that the Ohio- or, I'm sorry, the DEP in Pennsylvania now, for sure, has about contaminated wells. And this is a long press release about what I just explained to you. And so I'm- I'll just give this to Sabrina. So it just seemed like that way you would have a paper copy of that-
Good, thanks.
-as backup. And I may have just handed you one copy too many. So-
Here, I'll give you this back, you don't have to worry.
Thank you. And that is the summary for today.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and ask, um, Joanne to come in?
Could I have you clarify, which one was Todd?
Gonna come back?
Well, no, I know he's coming back, but he had a preference of the two.
Yeah, it was the second one.
Which one was- was it A or B?
It was the second one, it was B.
B, oh, B.
That's definitely the exceptions in the NDS. Thank you, everybody. Hi, Mary.
Hi.
What is this thing?
It seems there's something in our personnel manual that talks about selling items.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you all doing?
How was the fixture this morning?
How's the what?
The fixture.
The fixture?
I can- um, Janet came in this morning, a little bit ago, I imagine she'll be coming back, but she wants to borrow a truck or something to haul the computers.
She had talked to me earlier, and we gave her our van to use.
For- but are those the old computers?
No, these are- all they're moving today is thirty-one new monitors and thirty-one soundbars. The towers have not come in yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in Yularange for her to have a truck?
We- they already have it, and they're loading, and things are going south.
But I want to be sure that we're not gonna use obsolete equipment, okay?
I understand, and my people are poised downstairs that whatever comes in stays down there till we release it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, happens in baby states. Whatever happens on the dock.
Stays on the dock for- until we're ready to send it back, yeah. All righty.
In the meantime, we might get the newer ones.
If you can believe delivery dates, and sometimes we may have the new towers, which is the newer one. They might be shipped on Monday.
Oh, great.
So-
We might get them when, like, Wednesday or Thursday?
No, 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 we- we might get delivery of them on Monday. I talked to a freight company this morning. She called me and was talking about some stuff coming, so-
That's great, thank you.
All righty.
I was sending that, the old ones, then? Were there any of the outdated ones that were sent?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Yeah.
We can't cancel that?
They were supposed to have done that, and so when I called Dell and said, why are these still shipping? Well, Dell didn't coordinate the canceling of the order well enough. So I said, well, should we just refuse shipment? Is that easiest? And she said, well, no, because the freight company then, she said, the best thing to do is just receive them, hold them, and then call us to pick them up, and we'll send whatever we have to do to come pick them back up and take them. Yeah, so that's- I don't- the bad part about it is, is I'm sure they're trying to make sure that they don't try to bill us two or three times or whatever, and that's what's helping not to do that. I think by sending them back, receiving them, and then saying, with this whole shipment right here, take it back, because we don't want them, and then that makes that invoice go away.
Okay. So we'll start with the resolutions?
Sure. The first one is an inter-agency community partnership letter agreement with the Portage Learning Centers for WIP. Nice collaborative effort.
Yes. I will second.
Is there discussion of those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Next is to approve specifications for regional planning to set the bid dates for facade rehabilitation for the Phoenix blocks- facade rehabilitation for the Phoenix blocks two, three, and four for Coleman. And this was CDBG.
CDBG, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm, so move.
Um, I won't abstain from this just because I serve on the Coleman, but I'm their vice president, so I'll abstain.
And I'll second it. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
One extension, one extension.
The third is, um, the acceptance of a proposal for Hammond Tree for the county engineer to do construction testing and inspection on the Liberty Street Bridge replacement project in Garrettsville.
Could we, you and I will move for the contract for the, for the inspections for the Liberty Street Bridge.
I will second.
Um, is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next is to enter into the ground lease for approximately twenty-nine acres with Stanley Sayer. I didn't want to call it a renewal because in the past he'd had the thirty-two acres and this time we asked to hold some acreage for the Sheriff's Department to do their gardening thing. Um, I made sure that within his lease this time, it says this is only for, um, one year and we're going to bid out for the next, you know, twenty fifteen, so everyone's aware.
Great. I will salute, it's the twenty-nine acres to Mr. Stanley Sayer.
I will second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, number five is to, now the resolution to declare DSV to be in default of their contract for the site work at the, at the Kent Municipal Court and also to terminate their contract. Um, this was the second piece, the letter you signed last week, now this formally allows their surety to take and get everything else finished out and charge through the insurance piece, the surety piece.
Have we paid them anything so far?
Um, they've been paid for the work so far that they've done. Um, I, the last time I looked, I think it was fifty-five or sixty thousand dollars of unfinished that were, that was on their contract.
Denise had told us, which is wonderful, that with them being able, her being able to pursue the bond, that the section would be.
Paid, the ones that have claims in now, yeah.
Goodness.
Yeah.
So I will salute the DSV members in default of the contract.
I will second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, under discussion number one, the Akron Rubber Ducks have asked us about if we'd like to have a, um, a night at their stadium again like we did last year. Um, they're setting dates up for, you know, um, companies and so forth. Um, Erica got the email and wanted to know if we wanted to do that again this year, if that was all right with you to pick out some dates or whatever, to see what could be done.
So we just drew the rubber ducks?
That's their new names.
Yeah.
Changed it.
Yeah. I like the Arrows, I just, I just.
I hate when they change the stadiums.
Yeah, I thought Rubber Ducks was kind of a strange name, but.
I've got to.
Yeah. So it would be Portage County Night at the Arrow Stadium, or, with the Rubber Ducks, if you guys so decided to do that.
All those, would any of you have caught the, I think it was national news, they were showing, um, you know, the tsunami that had been, when was it, two years ago?
Yeah, and the ducks showed up.
The rubber ducks that showed up.
In San Francisco or some place.
Yes, right.
Forgotten where, but.
Oh, from a.
They were trying to, to explain.
The currents.
The currents and because of this unfortunate.
Yeah.
Situation with the airliner, and how debris shifts or moves.
So quickly and so far.
Yes, and their example was to show these rubber ducks that came through the tsunami and also found their way across the oceans, and they were, it still looked like a pretty viable rubber duck to me. And it was, yeah, it's amazing. Okay, I just thought I'd show you. Sorry.
That was interesting.
Yeah.
So if you want to do that, would you do a journal entry today? Yes, okay.
Thanks.
All right. No problem. Okay. The next piece that's coming up is a poll worker paid leave of absence policy. And Brad had originally asked me about, evidently this was brought up originally in twenty-twelve, and he thought that when the, the newer rendition of our policy came out in May of twenty-twelve, that this was going to be in it. I looked, what's posted is not, I couldn't find anything in the HR, um, on their, um, files or anything like that where it was adopted by you folks and was supposed to be added. So he is asking if, if this would be something that you would consider doing. You don't have to decide today since this is the first time you're seeing it, but he, he obviously is, they're trying to generate service by people to work at the polls.
When you said we approved it.
He said that he thought it was approved. I couldn't find anything in any HR documentation and I did not go through any kind of meeting minutes or anything from your board.
I don't think it was approved if my, I can't, you know, we have to check the record to be sure, but I know that we were going to consider it.
Okay.
So we put on for next week?
Yes.
Okay.
This is something that you can check with.
Because I don't recall it at all, but, um, you would actually pay a poll worker if they were taking a leave of absence?
It's, um.
What this is, that, any, what we're doing, if we do this, we can adjust it, but we, they sometimes need poll workers, so we told our employees.
All right, that's, now.
That's the piece. No, no, that's okay.
That one I'm familiar with. I was just thinking the poll worker.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, no, I was, I thought poll workers.
Sure, yeah.
All right, I, I remember.
I have a couple of questions that I want to try to figure out my own mine before we discuss it next week, but I can mention them now. One, they're getting, there's an inequity. You have volunteers who are wonderful who come in and work all day long and they get paid, what, a hundred, two hundred dollars, whatever it is. If we do this, what will happen is that there'll be poll workers like that getting two hundred for the day. We'll have other people who are getting full-time pay, maybe fifteen dollars an hour, plus they'll be getting the two hundred or four, whatever it is that we pay.
They used to have to give that up?
But anyway, whatever, however we arrange it, there's still a big inequity. And then the second question, I mean, that's one concern, it may be something.
Yeah.
That's not a concern, but it's something I'm thinking about. The other thing that I'm thinking about is that the supervisor, there's no, nothing in here that gives the supervisor the authority to say, I don't want it. Well, the only thing the supervisor can do in here is say, I, if they give seven days notice that this person is not free because I can't give them up. But I think that we ought to think about whether or not it should, should it be our decision that everybody's allowed to do this, or should we say that it's up to the individual departments and.
Director.
And so forth. So those are two things we can think about.
Okay.
And then we'll put on for discussion next time?
We, you know, now that you clarified what it was, we had done, we had done this before.
And you did do it last year.
Yes, right, we did. We did approve, and I think we left it into the discretion of the office holders.
Office holder, okay.
That they wanted to release their employees.
Could we get a copy of what, what we did last year?
Sure.
It's going to be on for next week for discussion.
Right, but, but we had done it before. Again, I was just poll worker leave, but I didn't.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
I did not read it full.
Okay. Anything else on that one?
No.
Okay. The next one is the purchase of adoption services agreements. Um, the way that it's set up currently, um, when you look through was that Judy had the discretion to sign on behalf of the county, and when it was reviewed by the prosecutor's office, they wanted me to make sure that I brought it to your attention and to see if you wanted to be on it as well as most of the agreements you do sign.
Yeah.
And it's on behalf of the department, so.
Well, you know, Judy brought it to us a week or so ago to discuss the, the reason for doing it, the rationale.
Mm-hmm.
And how it works for some counties because it could be a political firestorm.
Okay.
If, but, but I thought we kind of agreed at the end, and I, I have to listen to the tape, but I thought we agreed that it would come to us. Doesn't happen very often, maybe once a year.
Yeah.
Or maybe once every three years or something.
This thing, the adoption, I thought that was something else.
Oh, maybe, yeah, maybe.
This is an adoption thing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the, what am I thinking of then?
I think, I don't think.
I know, I thought it was the change, exchange of money.
No, no, right, she, she had brought that.
That's something else, yes.
That was something, this is a different.
This isn't about exchange of money.
No, this is a purchase agreement with.
Okay.
But, but, you know, the point is still, same, we should.
We will be paying, for example, in this, in this configuration.
Should we discuss this with Judy?
You can, um, they sent it to me to say, to bring it up to you, um, and I, and like I said, the prosecutor was the one, David Brode, when he reviewed it, thought that you guys should weigh in on whether you want to be part of the signature process or not.
Yeah, I would like to put it on Judy's agenda to discuss first because, um, for instance, I can just give you one example, but number three on page two, it says the contract period, this agreement will be in effect from the date of execution set forth below and will continue until either all the work is completed or this agreement is terminated according to termination policy in this agreement. And I'm thinking you should remove either all the work is completed, it should be, because that could be never.
Mm-hmm.
So anyway, that's why I'd like to discuss it maybe with Judy about the details.
Is it okay if I send this email, email her and just say, the board wants you to put it on your agenda or whatever?
Yeah, that's great. And then we'll have a chance to ask all of our questions of her because it's her, she knows more about it.
That's fine. Um, the last piece, thing that I wanted to talk to you is about the new Kent court cleaning. And I have copies that I wanted to hand out to y'all about this first. Whoops, I'm sorry. Um, we, we sent proposals out to four different vendors, the current vendor and some that had contacted the board recently, um, and we got really different bids back. No time cleaning, which is the military, remember? Okay?
Yes, ladies with the, yes.
I actually saw them, I, when I was at the court one day, they were there to take a look.
Oh.
To figure out how much it would cost, and their costs that they suggest would be eight thousand dollars a month, and they would have two employees there between the eight and four o'clock hour cleaning.
How much is that per hour?
Eight thousand per hour?
Yeah.
Um, I didn't do the math on that, but two people for, I mean, divide sixteen times.
Well, we can figure it out.
Yeah, but it's, it's very high.
Very high.
YBM, which is the second one down, is the current cleaner there. They came back with twenty-eight sixty-four a month and they again would have two employees working this. Um, Kent Be Clean and Hi-Ho Janitorial, um, one did not, decided not to because they're not an LLC anymore, don't have the, that designation to do public work. And then the Hi-Ho Janitorial just didn't respond. Um, when we met with the judges, um, at one of our meetings, they discussed the fact that, um, sometimes employees that you get that work for a company, you know, we, we have to make sure that they're bought, you know, that you have some kind of background check and so forth like that on them. And they really thought that they would like to have a dedicated employee there. So what I, the top two lines that I gave you is, our maintenance one is our, is what we consider our cleaning janitorial staff here. They do have other duties like snow removal, lawn steps and so forth, whatever. So I wanted to run the numbers and made sure that I talked with Todd to say, you know, am I figuring this out right? And he said, yes. Um, that if we hired a maintenance one at starting eleven oh seven an hour, and then after a hundred and twenty days did their increase, the amount of money we'd be paying is almost the same as what YBM would be, um, charging.
Is that for two employees or?
Just for one. Because here.
Well, I'm sorry, just for clarification, YBM is going to give us two employees for thirty-five thousand a year.
Because he thinks it's going to take two employees to keep it clean.
But you're saying that if we have a county employee, it'll be one employee for the same price.
Right.
So it's not the same price.
Well, I, in my mind, I don't, I don't know how these folks are justifying the two employees there at all.
In other words, you're saying we can get the job done for the same price, right?
Yes, yeah. Um, but besides the fact that we normally had to contract out with a contractor to do the, um, the sidewalks and that kind of things to salt and, yeah, right, so we would not have to do that because this employee would be responsible for taking care of the sidewalk and the steps. The city of Kent is still supposed to be doing the plowing of the lot. Um, we will also have grass that will need to be cut, we will have, I guess, according to what the landscape is supposed to look like, there's going to be quite a bit of maintenance there as well. So that's why I'm saying, I think that one of our employees could probably, a employee could take care of that building. Um, we have janitors here that one takes care of like three floors and the other takes care of three floors and one floor is done by job and family. So I'm kind of trying to say, I think one person can do this. Um, I ran it by and talked with Sunny and Mark, um, and they're like, yeah, we think so, we think as well, you know, that if we had someone dedicated to this building to keep it. And then down the road, I've asked at different meetings with the judges, that I hope that after this is all said and done, that they will use some of their money that they take in on the fees to pay for the maintenance and upkeep of the building so we don't have what happened to the jail, where we didn't have all the extra money and it's not been kept up. Um, I, the jury's still out on that, I don't have an answer, but I'm hoping that they.
The jury's still out?
Sorry, I'm sorry, you know. So that's what I'm thinking, but if, if you would rather stick with an outside company, we can certainly do that.
Well, if, if you think they can do, I prefer an employee, if they can actually, they'll do the sidewalks, the steps and do all that, it'd be only one person over there.
So that would be a full-time, I mean, full.
It would be a full-time person, full person for us, correct.
The company comes in and goes out.
Right. And the other thing that these other companies do is they're, and this is what I've gotten from the judges at the courthouse and also at, at Kent, the employees come and go, and that's what causes them heartburn a lot of times that, you know, they don't, they're not consistent keeping that.
And then if we had a, a full-time employee there, in the winter when we have snow, they would be there to unlock the fence doors so that.
Secured area and clean it out.
Cloud.
Right.
Well, they wouldn't clean it, but the city would clean it when they were cleaning this, doing this.
I hope so, if we can make sure that we can give the same hours.
As long as it's open.
Right, and if not, my intent was also to make sure, because there's a lot of sidewalks there.
Yeah.
That we have a snow blower and that person needs to be able to operate that.
Right.
And then, you know, as big as that secured area is, I understand that there's probably only been two, maybe three cars at the most parked in there, and then of course, the transport bus will be going through and dropping people off, so, um, I would think that maybe we could also snow blow.
Yeah.
What's needed there, I don't know.
Since the city's bringing, you know, paying to have a, a snow removal service come way through and clean our parking lot, as long as that fenced area is unlocked, they should be able to do that as well.
Get in, yes, and I have no, and I think that that's fine. My question probably would be, will be, will the sheriff's office let us unlock it for them? And they, as long as, you know, it's an employee, I think that would be fine. I think that they'd be a little less than want to do that if it was an outside company.
Can they get a snow plow?
In there?
Yeah. And maneuver, because I can remember, it wasn't a snow plow, but up here when the judges, whatever, the, the, the arm that comes down automatically got run into by a, was it a van?
With.
It was something.
Okay.
And it didn't work, and it didn't work, and it didn't work for a very long time.
Yeah.
So I'm just making the equation, will.
It's supposed to allow, but, you know, I, now that I think about it, I'm not sure that I have the measurement of the gate, but if it will allow the tran, the transport that I have the measurement of the gate. But if it will allow the tran, the transport van thing that we have get in, as long as it's not like a county engineer plow truck, and it's just a normal, like what we use here to plow our lots, as long as it's that, they should be able to get in. Those are eight, eight feet wide, I've got to believe that the fence gate is wider than that. So I just.
I'm just wanting to bring.
No, oh, absolutely.
I like your idea about the, first of all, the one person assigned to that building and the snow blower and those kind of things, that person would be able to be attentive to it.
Yeah. The, the other side of the coin is, is that we would have backup from here with our regular maintenance guys here too, you know, so because that person inevitably will, may get sick, eventually will have vacation. So our fellows here need to become acquainted with that building just as well, so that they can serve as backup if that's the way you guys want to go.
Okay. Do we need to take any action? Is there, do we need any?
What about the money?
Well, that will have to be, you know.
Does the judges maybe?
It, in essence, the cleaning of the Kent Court comes out of the maintenance budget now, so it would just be redirected up into salaries.
So we, do we spend that much now?
Um, you, you do not spend that much now.
I'm not sure we spend that much.
Um, I'll go back and look.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not even for even. But if we had to use the low bidder, this is how much you're going to, you would be spending. It, it's going to change to that higher amount because of the size of the building and so on.
But that's a separate question. We've decided that we want to use the employee.
Okay.
But the question is, whatever we are spending now for the Kent courthouse, whatever that dollar amount is.
Will be redirected.
There's an additional amount, yeah.
Yes.
And then there's going to be additional amount needed. So who's going to pay the additional amount? That's what we need to decide.
Okay, all right. And I will check with Todd with that, if, if it should be coming from where. So then, what'll happen, since the court is going to open on the seventh, and obviously we don't have anybody hired yet, we'll be filling in with maintenance from here to take care of that. I didn't really want to introduce a company into doing anything at that point.
So we, we maybe should do a journal entry to authorize you to post?
Please.
Okay.
So that we can get that going. And the general contractor is supposed to fully clean the building to pristine before they leave. So I'm hoping that that happens correctly, you know.
Did we schedule the open house and?
They haven't yet, because I think what they're kind of waiting on is to see how the first few weeks go and the whole thing with security and the whole nine yards. And probably for nice weather. I wouldn't want mud tracked through there right off the bat. I, I think we wait till it's a little bit nicer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Julie.
Yes.
It's, we want to recess for lunch, but, did you have something else, Julie?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. We want to recess for lunch. Could we ask Jobs and Family Services to come at 1:15 instead of 1:00?
I don't know.
All right.
Yeah, just a painful.
Yes, okay.
Whoa.
That's amazing. So we can hire a full-time person who will be there all the time.
Yes, yeah.
And they're dedicated, and they're loyal and dedicated, and they're there.
Yes.
Do more of it.
Don't get it.
Kay, you want to come?
Sure.
We're waiting for, for Marie, but we should catch up when she comes.
Okay.
When she comes.
I'm going to lift her up.
Mm-hmm.
You sit there.
I'm sitting here.
Yeah. Do you want me to start or do you want me to wait?
No, well, can we hear her coming?
I can check, I can look.
Well, she's, she's not coming just yet. Okay, so let's just start, okay? Because it's been 15 minutes.
Okay, okay. First of all, we wanted to have a little bit of the board's attention today to talk about stormwater program. Sabrina, I don't know for your benefit exactly how much you, you know about it, but the commissioner, the county does have a stormwater permit that was issued, oh God, many years ago now. We're in our second five-year, second five-year cycle, I think.
Starting on our third, yeah.
Starting on our third, okay. Anyway, we have a, the commissioners created a, a stormwater program.
She is coming, so maybe just wait one minute.
Okay. There she is.
Whoops.
Hey.
Sorry.
Somebody has to be last tricked.
I'm sorry, Chip. Anyway, real quickly, a synopsis, if you will, and we can talk in detail in future time if you want, but the commissioners created the Stormwater District and levied an assessment in the unincorporated areas of the county, not within the cities. We have no jurisdictional authority over the cities and villages. They're doing their own thing, and a couple of them have the same thing we do, if you will, a little different, but basically the same. Anyway, we have a, the county has a permit, and one of the primary things that we have to do in order to comply with our permit requirements is to meet the six minimum control measures. And one of the components of those six control measures is an educational program. We, in the past, James has somewhat been the author or the director of our educational efforts, if you will, and Lynn has done a large part of those for us. We've reached out into the community, and we've sponsored functions, we've done different things. And most recently, at our last Stormwater Task Force quarterly meeting, we were approached by Dorothy, who is with us today, Dorothy Ferris from ODNR?
Yes.
Yes, correct, ODNR.
I should have the card.
Yep, thank you.
And Dorothy has a educational program opportunity that, that we kind of think fits our criteria and would be a, a good effort for us. So we thought the best thing to do was to bring it to the board, let, invite Dorothy to come and make a presentation to you, let you see what this is about, and then decide if we want to fund a portion of it, which, which is what this is about. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dorothy and, and we'll go from there.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. It's a pleasure to be here, and I really appreciate your time today. So I'm going to talk about my favorite project, the Raising the Environmental IQ of Northeast Ohio, Conservation Crusader Project. Make it go. To make sure it's not user error. Okay. This project is a measure of the Western Reserve Resource Conservation Development Council, also known as the RCND. You may have heard that. It is start, we started with private foundations back in 2012 to get the project started. Most recently, we've been funded from a grant from the Ohio Environmental Education Foundation, and that, or fund, rather, and that ended just here in January. And what it is, it's a partnership with WKYC in Cleveland and a local content partner group made up of soil and water conservation districts in the region, as well as watershed groups and others. We partner together to bring content to WKYC, and they provide us venues to, to get that content to their viewers. Now, basically, the, the aim here is to leverage the popularity and credibility of local weather TV personalities to make folks aware that they can positively impact the environment by the things they do in their everyday lives. And we try and provide information on how they can do that using the various elements of our project, and I'll go through that here. Our project elements, we, we have a, our, our own, and it's still there even though the project ended, we have our own section of the WKYC weather page that shows our content, videos that we create with the weather personalities. We also have twice monthly four-minute segments on the midday Live on Lakeside program, featuring Holly Strano and Michael Cardamone. We get social media posts from them on their Twitter and Facebook pages, both at the WKYC page as well as the Weather Warriors page. And we get a very highly rotated video banner ad on the Cleveland Yahoo Weather webpage with Betsy Kline coming out saying, click on me to learn more about conservation. And so if you ever go to that page, I about cried when I saw that because I just thought, who wouldn't want to click on that? And it takes you right back to those monthly videos. So this is a sample of one of the videos, and I'm hoping I can go to the web. Is it possible to do that? Could you click on that, that link there, the orange words on the left?
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Oh my goodness. This is waving on me.
Did you say it was waving?
Pardon me?
Did you say it's waving on you?
This is technology.
Thank goodness. I didn't want to sit here and be the only one.
You could be Captain Environmental Engineer.
We produce all of the content for this, so they say our words.
I'm not volumeing here, that's the problem.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Did you even think about that?
No.
Well, these are fifty minute, or fifty-second spots, and.
Conservation Crusader today.
Oh, great, thank you.
Simple steps. Grow made-of plants.
If you like.
Most native plants will require a lip.
And.
And, great, thank you.
Here it is.
Pesticides to grow. Harvest rainwater. Keep your grass three and a half inches high. Taller grass helps water soak into your lawn, shades out weeds, and avoid using chemicals with wet weather that's in the forecast. Only rain down the storm. For more information, contact your local county soil and water conservation district.
Conservation Crusader is supported by the Western Reserve. Now, we create these pages on the weather webpage. We have the video portion, and then we provide the supplemental information. And it's folks like Lynn and all, other folks within the soil and water districts that take turns, we organize as a group for them to take turns in putting this content together. And I'm the point person, the contact between the, the local partner, partner group and WKYC. So we've got all kinds of supplemental information and links to other good information. So that's just the weather webpage portion of it. And then I'm going to go back to the, great. And then this also runs on, all these videos run 20 times per month on the digital channel. So anybody that even doesn't have cable and just has the digital will see this as well. And then we have, then we have the twice a month Live on Lakeside segments. And we, each quarter for the year's program, we got four that would be onsite. So these kind folks here agreed to bring us out to Crestwood, and the crew from WKYC came out, and we'll show that video.
Just a little bit of background on the Crestwood. This is one of the education sites that you all funded.
The Stormwater District and the Board of Commissioners funded. And we had an opportunity to get, that was on TV. I mean, I think that's fabulous. That's just wonderful publicity for, and, and just what an outreach project it is.
Yeah, I think that's fabulous.
Courts of preserving our environment and our waters.
Yes, take a look at what Portage County is doing to help.
We're here at Crestwood Elementary and Intermediate School. They're teaching young kids at an early age about stormwater conservation. Joining us this morning is Joe Walsh, Walsh Cobb, the teacher at Crestwood Elementary, along with Michael Moratti, who's with the Portage County Engineer, Stormwater Utility Administrator. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Michael, why are we here at Crestwood's campus today?
We're here today to take a look at what Crestwood Schools has done with the grant that was awarded to them from the Portage County Commissioners out of the Stormwater Fund to help them construct a land lab for the district.
Now, tell us about this grant and what that money went towards, and how it's really going to benefit these kids.
The commissioners decided that one, one of our permit requirements is education. And in order to reach out to the masses, we thought it would be best to start with the schools, because the schools have the greatest impact. So we set up a system, and Crestwood applied for a grant. It was awarded a $25,000 grant out of the Stormwater District funds to be used to facilitate the construction of their land lab and to buy equipment that the students could use to take measurements and record things.
Now, fee reduction aside, with all the money, obviously, it is, why do you think it's important, I know being a teacher, to teach these kids at such an early age about stormwater conservation?
Ohio at one time was one of, had the largest number of wetlands in the United States, and we've lost over 90% of our wetlands. And people are now finding out how that impacts our, our society and our lives. So by teaching the really young, they go home, they carry that to mom and dad, and mom and dad come back. And this isn't just for kids. We're expanding this to include high school and community groups too, so that we can really educate them about water and its impact and how wetlands impact environment.
Now, we're, we're actually in the lab right now. It's not your lab where there's people in white coats in a room. This is the lab. The land is the lab. What are these kids doing? And how are they using this land as a lab?
What they're doing right now, some of the kids are doing some baseline observations. So we just, we just got this in, and we're still purchasing some equipment. So we used the grant to buy some GoPro cameras. Those cameras we're using to take pictures of different things, which meet standards. So talk about, you know, setting, using scientific inquiry, and talking about the environment. What was more important about this is that by kids doing real research, they have real ownership. And that's something that will carry them forward. As, as we look to the 21st century, that's what we want kids to do. We want them to work collaboratively. We want them to be environmentally aware. We want them to use technology to connect themselves to the rest of the world.
Is it your plan to have this, this lab being used for years to come?
Absolutely, years to come. We've been really lucky. The Portage County Soil and Water has supported us for years. They've helped us do an Earth Day, reaches out, we have over 600 participants who come to a free event every spring. I'm lucky enough to work with some high school teachers that are sending their kids and scouts that are sending their kids to help with improvements here. We built that into, built that into our grant. And Mike, this grant, I'm the one that got elected to talk, but this encompasses several teachers from both buildings who worked really hard. We try things out with kids, we see what works. We're looking at our standards. We're looking at how we want kids to be. I live here, so these kids are my future, you know. I'm taught in this district long enough, the kids I taught are teachers here now. So it's important to us and to move these things forward.
I can just see the passion in, in your voice and in your actions. And these are first and fourth graders, and they really look like they really love what they're doing. So they are really taking ownership of this.
They really do. They own this. And we're lucky enough, the kids that are seniors this year were our first group. They're some of our, well, actually, they're our second year Earth Day participants who are coming back and moving back. And so it's exciting, you know. And it's not just me on the face here today, but it's, it's lots of teachers, lots of passion, lots of kids.
Well, thank you so much, Michael, Joe, for doing this and for joining us. And if you want to learn more, you can do so at ohioedr.com/soilandwater. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Hey, and thank you for coming.
Yeah, it was great. Of course, seeing those kids, they really truly seem like they were enjoying it, and they wanted to learn. So it was a great thing.
Learning can be fun, see?
Yes.
One like that.
Yeah. So those are, those are, this is a sample. We do four of them outside in the year. We, the rest of them are in studio. Lynn's been on at least a couple of times, got her picture taken with Kenny Loggins. She was on the show, so great time providing really, really great.
That is nighting for stormwater.
We got Michael, we got Michael to touch compost and, and learn that it's not a bad thing. So if we can teach folks like Holly Strano and Michael Cardamone, who put themselves in front of lots of people about this stuff, then we, we're really making an impact, because they'll, they'll be telling people.
That was terrific. Our teacher's wonderful. I mean, she's so enthusiastic, and she's got all those kids involved.
She is just as much a ballifier as you would think.
Yeah, she's amazing. I'm wondering if something like that should be put on our website, as a link.
We have those all on our YouTube channel. You can take the link, embed it, whatever you like. This is what we want. We have several communities within the area that have taken videos, you know, that didn't even include them, with good information on them, so.
So can we, can we, can we get it on our web? We can get the link on our web.
On the stormwater or on the commissioners?
On the, on the Portage County webpage.
You have a stormwater tab, don't you?
Yes.
Is that where it should be, you think?
That would be an appropriate place if they want to put it on something they have as an extra, that's okay too. But certainly it should go on the stormwater page.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Nikki, you're a celebrity.
Are we paying for this?
I don't know about that.
I'm going to loan you a key for that.
I don't think I've made a faux pas out of anything, so it's okay.
You did a great day there.
I think you did. That was great.
And part of the beauty of this project, and I don't think I even realized it initially, is we get all this video that we create, we create the words and. We create the words and the setup, and it's professionally produced, and we own it. So the value that we get from those grant dollars were huge. You couldn't, you can't buy this at Channel Three. So we're really, really lucky, and they appreciate it because we're government. And that's why we get the consideration that we do. Other project elements, as I mentioned, we get the Facebook, social media posts. Here, here's one. We had a segment on agritourism and the importance of getting out, bringing your kids out to understand about the environment. So they, that's a sample of the post there. And then this is the, this is the Betsy Kling ad on the Cleveland Yahoo page. I won't, I won't view the video on that, but I guarantee you, if you go to the Cleveland Yahoo Weather webpage, it may still be running. They owed us a few after January, so it may or may not still be running. But I have a clip of it on my, my drive if you do want to.
I know. Probably stations have, you know, public information responsibilities.
Yes.
So we can do that. Does the cable also have public notification or any responsibilities for it?
I'm sure there's probably NCC requirements for them to do.
Yeah, maybe Time Warner would do the same thing.
We've had a presentation from Time Warner to take a look at this. The value that they were able to give us compared to what WKYC has been giving us just didn't seem to compare. And so we have entertained that. And we still may consider it in the future. It just depends on where the project grows. But we, we weren't in their bracket quite yet, so. So this is, this is some of the results that we had. You know, our weather webpage reviewed, you know, fourteen hundred views on the, on the different weather webpage videos. The Live on Lakesides, they're getting an average of twenty-two thousand plus people. That Betsy Kling ad, it, the click-through rate on that ad has done four times the average ad. If there was another regular ad, you know, selling toothpaste there, we get four times as many clicks as, as that, because people, I mean, it's, for me, I, like I tell you, I saw that for the first time and I cried. I just thought, how beautiful that Betsy Kling told you to click on something. And then we were able to get, you know, just like any other advertiser with WKYC, we're able to get some of the, the reporting requirement, or reporting numbers. This is Nielsen numbers. I'm sure you're familiar with Nielsen ratings. This is some of the Nielsen numbers. This is adults eighteen plus, about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand here in Portage County. We had six thousand, they, they reported, projected, we had about six thousand fifty-four views, or five percent of that audience caught those Live on Lakesides. Now, we know those numbers are probably low, because they also use another firm called Rentrak to do their, try and get a sense of who's watching what and how many. And while they can't, Rentrak doesn't give us the county data like Nielsen does, it does tell us that overall, the Rentrak versus the Nielsen, which is more accurate, because they actually call the homes. They don't actually have people that, you know, fill out a survey. They actually call the people and ask them if they watch things. And so the, the Rentrak numbers have a higher rating. So we know that six thousand is probably closer to maybe eight, nine, or even ten thousand. So we know that there, that there's more viewership there than, than the other. And then, of course, one of the other project's results we have is our Conservation Crusader character. We were able to get, use the grant money to get the Conservation Crusader character costume that can be used for a variety of events. I have some Conservation Crusader tapes for you, each of you. There you go.
Everybody's got a line, Maureen.
So here you go.
Okay, I got a line.
So enjoy. You can just wrap that around your back and walk through the halls, and people know, you know, you're a Conservation Crusader.
I wear this for autism.
There you go.
And again, we have, we have, we have a Facebook page. We have a YouTube channel. We have a Twitter account. Our, every time we post on Facebook, it automatically posts onto our Twitter account. The YouTube channel, we archive all of our videos on there. They're open to everybody. So even though our project numbers, you know, show one level of viewership, the fact that these are archived for, you know, perpetuity, will have many views on these. And this, this kind of information is available to everybody. And then we're looking into our 2014 campaign. WKYC came back to us with a modified version. We're looking to continue the monthly video and supplemental stories. Also, we're looking at, the video will run an increased amount on the digital channel from twenty times a month to fifty times a month. We'll cut down possibly the Live on Lakeside segments to one per quarter. But we will balance that with WKYC-assisted production of one-minute vignettes that will air during the Today Show. So the viewership there
Wow.
will be, you know, exponentially increased by doing it during that time slot. And then they've also offered us the ability to do target email blasts to, you know, over thirty-four thousand individual emails. They have all the marketing information. They buy that, you know, you swipe your CBS card, your grocery card. They get all that data, they buy it, and they can target by, by zip code, by use, by interests, whatever. So, you know, participating in this, you know, at a, at a, you know, ten thousand dollar level would be a quarter of our, our budget for the coming year. And we would hope that you would, you know, provide content for a quarter of the time over that year. And that would be, that would be one of the things would be included. The targeted banner ads, you know, it's guaranteed to be served a hundred and forty thousand times on that Yahoo, Cleveland Yahoo Weather webpage. And then, of course, we'll continue with the social media posts. And we encourage all of the Saltwater District watershed groups and others, we let them know ahead of time when those Facebook posts are coming, so that they can then again, share them with folks to just, you know, increase that web of connectivity with folks. So that's what we have. I appreciate your time very much today. And, you know, if you have any questions, I'm here for you. Have my card. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. We there is adequate money in the budget for, for this kind of thing, to support this. We've been trying to reach out and expand our educational efforts. And we sort of feel that this is the next level or the next step of something that we can do in that vein. And do you want to Well, along with our school projects, which you did have an opportunity to see what you paid for a little bit, even though it was brand new when it was on TV. In the Stormwater Program, we're charged to reach in five percent of the population in the county on an annual basis. This is what we're supposed to provide to the EPA. And this is one great way we can do this for, and it's, you know, for ten thousand dollars out of the Stormwater budget, I think it's fairly cheap to be able to reach those kind, you know, those kind of numbers and keep it up and staying in compliance with, with, with our, with our permit, so.
And we're selling Portage County outside of the county also.
And it's positive. I mean, it's good stuff. It's nothing Good positives. It's a good positive message about Portage County outside our county.
I have an idea. I don't know if it's a good one, but there's an arboretum spot right across from Roosevelt High School. And they, Davy has donated a lot of that. And they, they have classes that go over there to learn about trees and other things. But what about having a demonstration project on their property so that when they're teaching about the arboretum curriculum, they can
And those are the kind of things, when we did the Crestwood site, we were looking for a good spot to go. And we thought, well, we have the Crestwood site, which is part of the Stormwater District. District Stormwater Funds used to build that. And what a great way to highlight not only that, but the school and so on and so forth. So, but yeah, it's those kind of things that we're, we're looking for to, to highlight. This is what's going on in Portage County, so.
Can Lee explain to you that ten thousand goes to ODNR?
No, actually, it'll go to the West Reserve Resource Conservation Development Council, because it's a measure within the council, and they're, they're, we're using their bank and their click administrative services to kind of provide the administrative support for it.
Is that the same entity that we
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we're members, you're members, and we have a co-member, right.
Yes, they were just here.
Yes.
But you're, you're from the ODNR.
Right.
So the West Reserve is just the administrative
Right.
portion of it.
Correct. Yeah, because they have projects and it's one of their measures. Because I'm a regional person here in Northeast Ohio. I cover seventeen counties in Northeast Ohio, which are in the DMA for WKYC. This is part of my effort to help support my Saltwater Districts with giving them a venue to, to provide, you know, whether it meets a permit requirement or the general education about Saltwater conservation. I mean, there's some things that, you know, we get some efficiencies there by collaborating and doing things like this.
Some of these things go hand in hand. Count for both things.
James, may I ask you, have you had any other schools approach you?
Yes, and we're current, we're working on some proposals right now to come back at you with here soon. So in fact, the one Next level. One of, you know, and they're all different, and that's the great thing. And right now, we're, well, we're working with Southeast, which is the largest school district in the county, and the FFA group there, which should have a different twist on what they want to provide education-wise to the school, along with the grade school there at Southeast. Lynn and I met with them three weeks ago.
Yep.
And I do know that Mr. Campbell, the FFA teacher there, had all the eleventh, twelfth grade students do proposals to the class, because they do public speaking and all kinds of different things with FFA. And those wrapped up last Friday. And those students are going to be taking their proposals to the school board. He's taken the top two or three proposals from the class to the school board. And then they're going to, you know, work that way through before they actually come to the Board of Commissioners here. So, so it's, it's kind of an interesting process and, you know, another way that they're talking about stormwater, but they're doing it through different venues, having the kids come up with the proposals, having the, you know, the kids take it to the school board, you know, things like that, so they learn a little bit more about government, you know, as they go through. So I think it's, it's kind of neat. There really isn't a right or a wrong way. It's whichever group within the school grabs a hold of it and decides they, they want to run with it. And that's who we work with. Right.
And it has turned out kind of nice, because we have a, we have, currently, we have a high school, Waterloo High School. Crestwood was the joint, the elementary and the intermediate school. And then Field was a junior high. So right now, we've kind of got all age groups covered, just in different school systems. And it's, it's working out really well.
That's great. So did you need anything from us today?
Actually, we would, we would, we would like to ask your approval to, or to authorize us to spend the ten thousand dollars to fund the program, is what we'd, what we'd be asking for. Yes. Yes, no problem.
We'll do a journal entry of approval, and then do we need a resolution? Could you bring it next time?
I didn't even, I didn't even think about putting one together. I, I don't know that we need one. I think if we, if you just have a journal entry to rely on, that's sufficient. I don't, I don't think I need to send a resolution anywhere.
Okay. That's good.
We could add it to Dave's journal entries.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dorothy. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
You're very good.
And thanks for my tape.
Yeah, you're welcome. We have one.
Mr. Bennett, did you get our Stormwater, the Health Department Stormwater Report and your report?
I did. I was at my dinner, so I got it.
Well, not at the dinner. This was a separate one, the Stormwater Report. We sent it up earlier. You can
Yes, I did.
You did get it? Okay.
Yeah, it's in our packet.
Because that gives you a little bit of background too, before it goes into what we do. Well, the Soloways, we, Stormwater came up earlier.
It came up Yeah.
Okay, so you did get it. It had the Portage flag on the front of it.
Yes.
And our annual report's being finished up that goes to the EPA. It's due on Tuesday. And it'll be finished up and mailed out late this afternoon or early tomorrow. So I've got copies of that, but it may be tweaked a little bit before it goes out. So we can get those to you after it's finalized, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen, this will be a thank for coming to our dinner.
No, you can hang on to that. I expect you to wear that to the dinner this bit.
Just need tickets.
Whatever your little heart desires. Either way, I'm, I'm in for that.
Oh, hazard?
Thank you.
Hopefully, we don't need them. Hopefully, we don't need them.
Hey, good to see you, Todd.
Hi, Maureen.
How are you?
Yeah, good. I just brought my land bank stuff up, because land bank's after this, so. You forgot.
Oh, no, no.
I did not forget. What do you have here? We've got dibs, so we can have lobster dinners.
Oh, my gosh, this is so cool.
That's how we can pretend like we're packing conservatory.
These are cakes.
Oh, wow.
You know, for, for conservation.
I thought it was a vahushka.
In case we're running late, we can just pop out the window.
You can just use it for whatever you want.
This is a good-looking report.
Oh, yeah.
You know, did I get an agenda?
Nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you too.
Thank you.
Oh, that's all right. I think the report was like telling me Debbie, I don't think you've met Sabrina either, right? Have you met Sabrina?
I just introduced myself, so thank you.
Introduce yourself, guys, to Sabrina. Did you do that?
No. We have not. We haven't met anyone.
These are new guys.
All right.
Thank you.
These are some of my coworkers at, they actually work out of the meter office down in Dublin. And, you know, part of our investment team. And I thought they wanted to come up and meet everyone and get familiar with the county. This is Jason Click and Jason Headings.
Try to keep
Keep it easy.
There you go. That's
Just say Jason, and somebody will answer.
You've already learned the internal office.
That's right.
Not Jason's there.
Is it H-E-D-D-I-N-G-S?
H-E-A-D-I-N-G-S. Yep.
And yours is C-O-I-C-K.
Got it. Well, it's funny, when I, I say the name, and oftentimes I will get, can you spell that for me? Just take a shot at it.
Yeah.
It might have started with a K.
That's right. That's the
Do they have cards?
Yes, we do.
Yeah. If you had cards, that would be great.
Sure.
You're just going to, you know, pass them down? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order to ten. The approval of the December twelfth, thirteenth meeting minutes. If you had a chance to sleep in. Your motion, please.
Second?
On favor.
I don't, Sabrina, you don't sit on this board. Oh, I don't? Okay. As the president and vice president. Okay.
Okay. You're up, Debbie.
We'll just, you know, give you a little bit of a market update here. You know, the Fed's pretty much keeping, you know, the short-term interest rates close to zero here as they have, you know, since two thousand eight, you know, trying to stimulate, continue to stimulate this economy. We have had a little bit of change at the Fed. Ben Bernanke, who had been the former chairman, has resigned.
a different policy concerning?
She's, she's of sort of the same school as Bernanke was, you know, a little bit more on the dovish side, probably will stay a little bit more conservative, doesn't want to mess up this, you know, recovery that we're, you know, starting to see here, so probably will be, you know, a little bit more conservative with what she's doing. We just had a Fed meeting last week about the only big change that I think we saw, you know, in that meeting was that they, they took out the language that said, you know, that they were trying to, you know, reach that six and a half percent unemployment or better before they started raising interest rates. They took that number out of there. I don't think they want to have that, a number in there anymore. So now they're just saying that they're going to look for maximizing employment, not putting a number out there. And part of that is just making sure that we really are on the right track before they start making any, you know, interest rate moves.
Do you think that's an indicator that she's going to raise the interest rate?
Well, you know, on the same, on the same note, they actually have interviews after their Fed meetings, and she did, someone did ask the question, when do you think the Fed will start raising interest rates? You know, and they've started tapering back that quantitative easing program where they've been buying large amounts of securities out in the market. This past meeting, they continued to drop the amount that they were purchasing by $10 billion. You know, these sound like big numbers, and it is a lot of zeros, but they, if they continue to drop every Fed meeting another $10 billion off of what they've been purchasing by December, that quantitative easing program will be done with, as far as the purchases are concerned. But she did also mention that, someone said, okay, well, when that's done, when are you going to start raising interest rates? You know, and she said, well, you know, I don't have a specific time, but I'm thinking, you know, more towards mid-2015 to late 2015. And that still will probably be a very slow process, even at that point, if it's at that point, and it will be a slow process when it starts to happen.
You know, when she, right after that meeting, though, before the interviews and everything, the market didn't like her taking that figure out of there.
No, stock market took it very poorly.
No wonder. No wonder the stock market did, they've been.
Yeah.
They've been having a heyday.
Exactly. Well, it's been up and down, very sharply.
Markets love certainty. And they're making a thing like that.
Well, they've done very well.
You know, we always put a couple of economic charts in here, you know, GDP being one of them. GDP really pretty much is the growth of our economy at this point. We had a little bit of stall out in the fourth quarter. You know, we were only up two and a half percent year over year. You know, part of that was, you know, we had a very severe winter. I continue to.
Still are.
Forget about spring. What's spring? You know, but, and I think that actually slowed retail sales. It slowed down housing sales that really kind of start usually at the beginning of the year. You know, I think they were using the terminology freezeonomics out there. I, it probably sums it up pretty well. I'd like to see next quarter how that really kind of factors into the next quarter before we really take that, that that's in cement why we had a little bit of downturn here in recovery. The next page, we always, you know, these are all factors that the Fed looks at. Inflation out there continues to stay very low. Year over year, we're only a little over 1%. The Fed's target range is, they really would rather see around 2%. And people think, well, why do you want more inflation? Inflation shows that you've got an economy that's continuing to grow. Right now, we're still sort of at this slow growth mode, so inflation still has continued to stay very low.
It's kind of a strange economy, though, because like I commented before, I mean, the things we're buying are costing more, so to the average consumer, we see some inflation, but yet, you know, we don't have.
Doesn't inflation mean that the cost is going up for the same product? But doesn't the growth, isn't that more indicative of the gross domestic product rather than the inflationary rate?
Not this, is it?
No.
Consumer Price Index.
This is, yeah, the inflation is the Consumer Price Index, and what the Consumer Price Index is, Kathleen, it's a bucket of products that they monitor.
Oh, I know, that wasn't my question. I know that inflation is indicated by this chart, the Consumer Price Index. My question had to do with the growth in the economy, and I thought someone just said that the growth in the economy was reflected in the inflation, and I thought it was from gross domestic product.
The actual measure is the GDP number, but inflation also shows, you know, is another factor that shows how the economy is doing. When you're starting to see, you know, inflation heats up, usually is an economy that's really starting to heat up also. So they sort of correlate with each other, you know. It's not a factor that drives the economy to grow. It's a factor that shows us how the economy usually is growing.
Another indicator.
It's an indicator.
Yes.
So something about what the consumer is buying costs more? I mean, are there larger ticket items?
Like, don't you feel it at the grocery store and?
Well, I think everything is up.
Yeah, yes, I mean, it's.
I just wondered if there's more of a, I guess I'm interpreting that as larger ticket items, or is there buying more vehicles, or they're buying more washers and dryers?
No, it isn't necessarily an indication that they're buying larger ticket items. It's purely the cost of every item that's been purchased.
Yes, because I would think the cost is up no matter what.
Depends on those buckets of goods, yeah.
And it can be the cost going up, or it can be that the product that you buy has a reduced amount. In other words, you used to sell coffee a pound in a container, now it's like 12 ounces for the same price, so that's an inflation.
That's actually purely a way that retail sales disguises the inflation area. Correct, yeah. Instead of raising the price.
Cookies.
That's right. Four bucks, yeah, four bucks. I know.
And next year, they'll just take three cookies out and charge you the same.
Well, no, exactly. I just had some which reflects inflation.
Exactly.
And there are less cookies in the box.
Yeah. That's with everything, though, the sugar, the flour, I started another thing. It looks small.
I mean, if you're a cookie gunner.
Same size box, but have fewer.
That's right. Yeah, or, yeah, the cookies go from the size of a silver dollar to the size of a quarter.
Inflation, this year, the little lemon, lemon drops a little.
We know what you're talking about, right?
I opened them up expecting, and they're, they're my rescue.
I like that word.
I like that word, Maureen. I have to remember that word.
The real interesting thing on inflation, and this goes back, Kathleen, I think, to some of your questions, as well as yours, Maureen, that the big difference is, you know, back to this whole Main Street versus Wall Street. When you, when we look at inflation, the single largest, for the most part, on average, unless you go and buy a vehicle in a particular year, the single largest spending categories outside of a mortgage on the average person's home or buying a car, food, putting gas in your car and heating your home, especially in a winter like we've recently experienced, you tell the average individual, prices are staying the same. They're like, that's malarkey. I'm paying more for my gas and my home, it costs me more to put gas into my car, but when you take that a step further and you take out food and energy, which is the classic inflation measure, right or wrong, that, those other consumables have not increased that rapidly.
And that's why it's hard to make that argument to people that we don't have inflation.
I can, this is an example.
That's right.
Good explanation.
And you also have technology in there, so you've got an area like, you know, we've, everybody anymore has an iPad or some type of, you know, product like. And the prices are coming down on those. They're coming down on, you know, laptops, that type of thing. So those get averaged into this, so, you know, whether, how much they weigh into this bucket of goods they put out there can determine whether or not that inflationary factor goes up and down also. The next page is unemployment. At this point, the national average is at 6.7% through February. It actually went up a bit here from January, but we're in the right direction. A year ago, we were at 7.7% unemployment, so obviously, we're moving in the right direction. You know, one thing, too, that's different on this chart that you've probably seen before is this participation rate, which is the dark line that kind of goes across the top, and you can see, we're starting in the 50s on this chart, you know, going out to current, and you can see how that gradually had come up, and it's starting to come back down a bit. A lot of that participation rate was a big baby boomer generation, number one, you know, coming out into the marketplace. And also, women. We were a big contributor to the, you know, and we're all women power here again. Women were, you know, started at this point in the workforce, so it drove up that participation rate in the workforce up because of those two factors. And now you're starting to see that baby boomer generation is starting to retire, you know, that is starting to come down here a bit. A little trivia information that I think is interesting, I read just this past week, for the next 15 years, 10,000 people a day here in our country are going to turn 65. 10,000 people a day. That just shows you how large that baby boomer generation was.
How many people are born every day?
How many?
How many people are born every day?
Don't know.
That's a good question.
That is a good question.
I wonder if it's the same amount.
Oh, no. I know, we know for sure. We're definitely in a, depending on which direction you're going, we're definitely in a deficit. There are more coming, if you take the classic sixty, more retiring than coming into the workforce. Oh, yes, absolutely.
But, you know, don't you find people who are working past the retirement years a lot more often?
Yes, which is going to shift that dynamic a bit.
Well, they are. I mean, I can remember when the record, when the record card was an evening paper, and my mom and dad would sit down and read it in the evening. It was such a slower life.
Yes.
And, you know, I'm aging myself here, but it was, it was nice.
Life before cell phones and iPads, right?
Oh, yes. And how did you, how did we exist? You know, I mean, I don't know.
Even the songs were slower.
Yeah. Just a little trivia. Orange County, there are 35 counties that have a lower unemployment rate than we do. We rank 53rd in the state, and I thought that was kind of interesting.
You mean 53rd being the low, lower?
No, we're 50, there's 35 that have lower rates than we do.
Than we do. A D V county.
Right, a D V.
You know, one thing that we've always talked about, too, is the U6 number, which is, you know, the unemployed plus those discouraged workers and the people that are only working part-time that would like to be working full-time. That number still is a bit high, you know, that's still at 12.6%. But if you look a year ago, that was at 14.9. So, I mean, that still has also improved here in the past year.
Could you tell me about this, this dark blue line in the white? One is the unemployment rate, which I do understand, but what does the participation rate mean?
The participation rate is really the bucket of people that can be workers out there in the labor force.
People saying, I want a job.
I want work.
Actively seeking.
So the dark blue line is that where we should, all those people should be working, but they're unemployed, is it?
Not necessarily, no. These are, these are people that are actually in the pool of workers.
Okay, they can work and they want to work.
So you can see your, to drive that point home, on your right-hand axis, that is the percentage of participation rate. So effectively, what that's telling us is about 63% of the population is actually saying, I want to work. Most of those individuals have a job, but some portion of those are unemployed, and then that drives the unemployment, which is measured on your left-hand axis.
If anyone analyzed, I said, very, what sustainment, do I want to use that term? I was, a wage gap will sustain, that is a first of all, you know, there are jobs that are out there available that attract, I'm thinking right now about downtown town, that just thrive, it's essentially, but there are probably a lot of jobs that are just at part-time or.
Or minimum wage.
Minimum wage. So is, I think, is there any such statistic, or how high is it, what would be a sustain?
Like, how many people are working at below their skill level? What, is that?
No, I guess that would be something to look at, too. What I'm talking about is there a.
More poverty.
That's the poverty line.
The poverty on your eyes are, you have to be a certain percent to be eligible for various programs, but I'm talking about, yeah, what it would take, and what would be reasonable.
I think, I think that's where.
What would be a wage that would sustain a person or?
Right, because, yeah, because I think I know what you're getting at, and I don't really know of any out there like that, because it varies so greatly from region to region and just the standard of living, and the cost of, yeah, the cost of living here compared to New York City.
By San Francisco.
Right, exactly. Even further, you get into the classic question of, so what is, how do we determine sustainability? Is that a?
Yes, yes.
Lower class, middle class, I mean, whatever these definitions mean, and these are so, the terms are so arbitrary.
So, so.
Yeah.
I was just saying, everyone has a different.
That's right. Everyone has a standard definition, you know.
Remember, you're talking about like the, what they call the working for, where they're working full-time, but they're not making.
They're not getting ahead.
They're not getting ahead, but yet they may not qualify for programs and stuff.
And unfortunately, too, what we're, we've seen since this last recession is a lot of the jobs that have been created have been in that sector, more in that service industry rather than the higher-paid jobs. And that is probably a contributor to why we haven't seen big growth in that GDP number also, because the jobs created, these aren't people with excess cash to be out there spending. You know, they're just living day to day.
You also see that come directly into play on the participation rate, because at some point, if the jobs aren't out there that people want, they say, well, I don't want to work. I'm going to go after government assistance, or continue to collect unemployment, or whatever that factor may be. So when you do see wages come more in line with what the average person considers to be reasonable, I'll use that term, you're going to see an uptick in participation. And the driver there, to tie these back together, and then we can move on, but when you see, when we begin to see that uptick in participation rate, somewhat counterintuitively, we are going to simultaneously see a bit more of an uptick in unemployment, because when the folks say, I want to work, it doesn't necessarily mean that there'll be as many jobs readily available, so we'll have a quick uptick in unemployment when you see that drive up in participation rate, which is a classic indicator of continuing improvement.
You know, the next page is the Ohio unemployment. Currently, you know, we've got January's number here, but actually, just this past week, Ohio released their number. They're, we're actually at six and a half percent here in Ohio, so great improvement. You know, at this point, last year, we were at 7.3% unemployment here in Ohio, so another thing, you know, positive here. Actually, last calendar year, Ohio lost jobs, and they also increased their unemployment rate while the nation was actually doing better last year. Ohio did not fare very well last year, last calendar year. They started last year at 6.9% and entered at 7.2% unemployment. But this year, we're starting to see that sort of turnaround. In fact, I think I've read here that Ohio was the second highest state in the country as far as job creation here in January, so another positive note for the state. Currently, Portage County is at 7% unemployment.
We've been better than the state in the past, but now we're, now we're doing so good.
But we're better than we were in January. But we're better than we were in January, it was 7.5 in January, so, I mean, we're still going in the same direction, but what we've done, Kathleen, is kind of zigzagged, you know? I think it's for a lot of reasons.
Well, and a lot of people are still saying, you know, with this weather that we've had, it has affected employment also. The next page is, is a page that I think tells a kind of a compelling story, and this is the yield curve. So this is everywhere from three months, and this actually shows out to 10 years. Obviously, we really are more focused at, you know, that three months out to five years. But the line on the top, the darker line on the top, is where the yield curve is today. And then the curve on the bottom, the lighter curve, is actually a year ago. And the thing that is most compelling about this is you can see, short-term rates have not moved one iota, in fact, actually went a little bit lower than they did last year, while the rest of the yield curve has actually started to come up here a bit. And part of that is market anticipation that rates should start doing better, the economy should be continuing to do better. One of the factors that I think is compelling about this is our outlook, and if we go to the next page, we're sort of in the outlook that the Fed's probably not going to start raising the Fed funds rates till mid to late 2015. As far as asset allocation is concerned, anything that we're buying in a less than three years is more in the bank products, CDs, CDARS, you know, those type of securities out there. Longer maturities, the agencies are the better option for us right now, and that's what we've been adding to in the portfolio. And with the steepness in this curve, it's finally given us opportunities to put some things out a little bit longer. And we have bought some things out in the four- and five-year area, you know, we bought some things just recently, you know, over 2%. It's been a long time since we've seen, you know, a number like that, you know, for 2%. So we have been locking out a little bit of longer securities, you know, not extreme long, you know, obviously, we can't go past five years, but we feel that it's a very prudent thing to do at this point with, with the way the yield curve is shaped. And we're looking to target putting a little bit more out there at this time.
And, you know, it's my guess that they're not really going to be called, although they are callable.
Yeah. Most of these agencies, what they've got, they've got call stipulations in their, you know, indentures, so, and most of the time, if they're, if they're going to call, it's because interest rates have probably dropped a bit, and they think they can reissue that debt at a lower rate. Right now, with interest rates slowly coming up like they have been, the chances of having those called is probably very minimal.
That's what I thought.
I was curious, I would think that no one would want to invest long-term with against low-interest rates, especially if the rate, if the Fed's going to change it and allow interest rates to rise, say, mid-next year. Because even, even at 2 points, right now, it's a little bit over 2.5% for the longest So, would you feel comfortable investing money at like 2% for five years when we know the interest rates are going to rise mid-next year, or not?
Well, part of it being, and maybe, Jason, you might want to chime, Jason's more of our, our investment person, you know, we have a team of investment people down in our Dublin office, which, you know, Jason actually works with directly, so I might refer that question back to him.
Yeah, the big thing here is really on, what are your expectations for how quickly rates are going to rise in the future? Right now, we think that even when they do begin to rise in mid-15, it's going to be a very slow rise. So due to that, and if you kind of do the math on, say, we were going to go out and just keep buying two-year securities instead of a five-year, well, two years from now, when we go to reinvest to make things, or to get kind of break even five years from now, the two-year rate would have to be eight times what it is today. And so we think that rates are going to rise at a much slower rate than, because we don't see two-year rates being eight times what they are today. So there, from your point of view, that could add a lot of interest income there, just because we don't think rates are going to rise very quickly. Now, if the Fed was giving a lot of hints that, hey, we're going to, things are awesome, we're going to raise these things really quick and get back to a 5% interest rate, we wouldn't want to be buying those securities at all, we wouldn't want to be buying shorter securities and then waiting to capitalize on this.
It's because their short terms are so flat and even lower.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, that two-year and end portion of the curve is so flat, and nothing has really changed. To add one additional comment to Jason Heading's point, that is also one of the reasons why we are not putting 60, 70, 80, 90% of the portfolio out in four- to five-year maturities. We are very intentionally allocating our diversification in such a way that as the shorter-term maturities roll off, we will be able to take advantage of that slow, even though we know it's going to be incremental at best, we'll be able to take advantage of those movements and ride the curve up, if you will.
And those projections as to getting to, I thought I heard 5%.
Oh, no. We didn't hear 5%.
I got to tell you, looking out there, everybody in the room, their ears per...
He didn't say win.
But it's going to be more, should we get to that again? More on those instruments you're talking about, that people normally, I guess, if there's a normal, invest in, such as a CD, or, this isn't any esoteric, anything out there that, that you might have, say, in a portfolio that might be available to you if you're willing to take a risk. This is more the plain vanilla stuff?
It is, it's the very plain vanilla. It's, it's the agency-type of security. And one thing too, you know, those have liquidity, you can, you know, rather than a, we actually put the, on the shorter end of the portfolio, we would have things like CDs and that type of thing, because you don't have liquidity with them. You know, the penalties out there are, are big with them, you know? But the longer end, you know, putting agency-type of securities, there's secondary markets for those, you know? If we really felt that we wanted to start to sell, we can also, you know? So that's another reason that you, you want to put your products that have that liquidity out longer, so. You know, the next couple pages really are the portfolio, and if you look in that portfolio, you're going to see, towards the end of that portfolio, you are going to see some, you know, four- and five-year type of agencies that we have added to the portfolio. In fact, we added a couple pieces even of some Muni securities, I think we bought City of Akron recently, but everything else really has been more in that agency market. One thing I wanted to point out to you, the last quarterly meeting we had, the average yield on the securities in the portfolio was .64. Currently, as of the other day, that's gone up to .85. So we've increased the yield on the portfolio by 20 basis points in a quarter, and part of that is doing some of those extensions out in the portfolio at this point.
Your second page list you haven't gotten there yet, the total invested is...
87, well, we've got a cash of 35 million.
Yeah, I was going to say, 100, so in the treasury, 122,000, something like that.
Million, yeah, 122 million.
122 million.
Right.
So, 122,000 dollars with cash on hand.
With cash on hand, right.
And what that means, what Deb was talking about, maybe another $100,000 in investment income, I was really excited about that.
Yeah, I think, I think the estimate I'd given you pretty much at the end of the year was about, about 500,000 from the portfolio for this calendar year, and because of some of these changes we've made recently in the portfolio, we've increased that by about $100,000. So, that's a very, that's a real positive thing, so.
And we, do we, where do we keep our cash accounts? Do we keep them in Chase?
Yes, Chase mostly.
Can we do Star or Ohio or anything?
We have very little in Star, very little. In fact, I think it may be, is it on here? What we have in Star?
Uh, yeah, 94,000.
Yeah.
And part of that Chase balance is probably down from there, because this was actually, that, those cash numbers were the end of February, cash numbers, and some of that was collection money and has been gone out from now.
Cash has to be available.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
That's very interesting.
Well, I felt a little bit better about this meeting than I have in the past, I mean, although it's not, you know, and I, and I told them downstairs, I said, you know, there is light at the end of the tunnel, and we just hope it's not a train, you know, and I don't think it is. However, like in 2011, I really felt, at one point, 2013 would be the year, then I thought, well, 2014 will be the year, well, now we're saying 2015, but I do believe we're going in the right direction, it's just that we zigzag along the way, right, you know?
And recoveries all have that, you know? You never have, it would be wonderful if we just saw, but we don't, we never see that. And especially as severe as this recession was that we came out of, I think we're doing the worst with it, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was great to meet everyone.
Yeah, pleasure meeting each of you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
A favor?
Aye.
All right, we're out of here. Now we've got a land bank, folks. Good seeing you.
Thank you all very much.
Have a great day.
Thank you, Jason.
Look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Our pleasure.
Appreciate it.
It's been nice to meet you, too.
Wow, we've got a big audience.
We're going to recess until my things open and then come back.
I'm going to say, yeah, I can take it.
Remember, last night, you put me on this.
I decided to be approval, and what happened?
Can we pass another one down?
Oh, Maureen, okay.
I think we'll be out here for a minute, Kathleen, so I can hold them after we come back.
How are you?
I'm good, I'm, I'm good.
You're bored?
You're bored?
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just very here.
She's got insurance.
She's got insurance.
She's got insurance.
She said she, you know, a couple years ago, I spoke, a couple years ago, we started doing our commission recording, changed the whole deal, changed the whole deal around and everything.
Everybody wasn't quite as thrilled as we used to.
They do their homework, so.
Yeah, that's it, yes. Well, I mean, I just, I couldn't believe it, it was that, it was that much, night and day, night and day.
How you doing? How you doing?
I just got with my architect yesterday to finish up the plans for the new office. He should be bringing them up to Maureen's office.
Okay, terrific.
Very good.
Did you get everything changed?
Was it, is your plans or the ones next either? Somebody was thinking some changes.
Oh, I, I did. You know, I'm a female, I do that. Don't, don't put me in charge of that. I told my husband to handle that part of it, I need the fine.
People come in and says, well, you know, we got the wall here, we want to move from here to this side. Well, that's random, that changes the building code, you know? I believe, think you had a, now they put in usually a low boy partition like you said, and then also somebody says, well, I don't want that partition, I want to deck the wall up. And they have to plant, and then already, the inspector comes in and says, no, changes the fire zone and the building code.
Hey, our, our building's in receivership now, our building's in receivership now.
Oh, God. Didn't you know, when we put the town center district there, when I put it all together, particularly for the architectural reviews, we geared everything around the clock tower in the office building. That was, that was the centerpiece.
Well, thank you.
Well, you've got to be...
I'm glad I did what I did, but it still bothers me, I'm in there for the building. We're talking about, and we're talking about where the clock tower is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I've been there, I got a type of video, I've been there since it opened, and, yeah, exactly. Yeah, we got a letter right after I came back.
It's a nice building.
You know, I was going to go and buy it, but people are tired.
Well, I just mean, it's...
It doesn't seem like anyone's might, uh, want to get theirs, which they will, they'll, they will buy it fast and get the whole reason.
Well, I'll tell you, one of the previous partners, and some other stuff in here, I got to know him pretty good. And, well, I tell you, any angle one way or another on there, you got to watch it like a hawk. Although, I think, I think John's pretty much out of it.
Yeah, what happened to John's other building with Greg Weis? Is Greg out of there? He needed to...
Uh, I don't know, Greg's still there, but Greg's not happy.
Why?
Well, he's stuck there. Yeah, he's a partner in that building.
But I thought the bank did that.
Well, it could have been, you know, I told, when that place was built, I figured, it was just before the, you know, the recession, and I thought it would go like that, because, you know, great location. I told John, so why somebody come in to me? I says, well, how come you didn't get the deal done? He says, he wants 4275 a square foot. I says, what?
Well, there was all kinds of work, you know, even the, when the chiropractor was there, that there was like a BMW 3, Starbuck, and, but they didn't like the traffic, which is very bad.
Well, then they were going to put the powerhouse in here and everything else, and then, and, you know, I told John, I said, John, this is, my daughter moved over to Oregon Trails on it, after the place burnt down, she had to move, and we negotiated a 10-year deal, okay? And beat the guy down, and every year, we move it up, so, they gave you, give the guy a five-year contract, go in, take him in low. I mean, brick field flat, Mike was, Mike was taking $7 a square foot, seven foot, this guy's asking 14, he could have went on the cash space for that kind of money.
Right, and that's what we wanted to do, because he's, look, he's a veteran, but he knows it's good. This is good, we looked around today, there's a couple of ones, one of the, one of the ones.
You know, that's the way...
They normally have a construction plan.
Hey, I forgot, I didn't get a chance to congratulate you on your appointment.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much, I mean, you stepped up a plate, that's great, that is really great, thank you.
It's cultivating the order at 2:45, please. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes? I know you have, Mark, I can tell.
So well.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Well, I missed the last meeting, so I don't have to worry about this.
Okay, good, Mark, law favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, move on. I'm glad to see you, Robin, we haven't seen you in a while, I'm sure we've got some questions on, we're not going to delve into it today, but, yeah, our bylaws, you know, we're working on those, Kathleen and I met and, and like this stuff, so. Our finance committee meeting that we were going to have before this meeting was, has, is going to be rescheduled due to everyone could not make it, so we are still going to get to that. And Bridge is on vacation now, so we've just got some scheduling problems. As you all know, I was going to meet with the school treasurers, that went well, and that doesn't mean that they're real happy about losing some of their DTAC money, and so I'm not here to report that. However, you know, they're, they're going along with it right now, but we have to keep in touch with them, report our progress, and just make sure that we're accountable, because that money is, you know, money's that they could use. So I, Todd had done, in fact, Todd attended that with me, and he had done up a schedule that was very easy to read, kind of like the one we're looking at now, to show what progress we had made, and when it gets to be Todd's turn, I'm sure he'd like to go over this and say, all right. We have an approximate figure for our DTAC deposit for the first collection, and I say approximate, because usually, this would be the exact figure, but our software system that we use in our collection has had some problems, nothing major, and this may be the exact figure, but they're working on it, so I didn't want to tell you this is the exact figure before we know, but it's, it's 253,249.32, so 253,0249.32. So two hundred and fifty-three thousand, two forty-nine point three-two. And that should be deposited as soon as we, uh, know that that is the figure, because, uh, Dennis, my deputy treasurer, he said it would be a lot harder for him if he cut the check and he had to take it back, and I thought, you know, we're not needing the money right now, so wait till they get that all cleared before we actually take the check and deposit it. Deb has included in our packet a sheet regarding our directors, uh, you know, once, like Brian left, we don't really have a procedure as to how we replace him. And, and our, that comes through our bylaws again, what you and I were working on, Kathleen. And we still need to get with our attorney regarding what kind of corporation we are. You know, it probably wouldn't hurt, Robin, if you maybe we, with Kathleen and myself, sometime to kinda go over our suggestions, and there are some legal questions that we have, but obviously we wanna use our attorney as well as possible, so, you know, but that would give us a, a good idea. Right, okay. Well, you know what, that, that's really all I have. So that was kinda short and sweet. Deb, do you have anything you'd like to? Okay. Dan, your treasurer?
Uh, nothing, just the update and financial records during the packet.
Okay.
Any questions?
Okay. Good enough. Any board members have anything they'd like to bring up? Oh, it is gonna be a short meeting, huh? Okay, Robin, you're up.
Okay, I can basically hear a part of questions.
Okay.
I'm mentioning you, I was talking a little bit about, um, the, applying for the second round of the hardest-hit money for neighborhood.
Is that what you brought up at the last meeting, Todd?
Yeah, we were just chatting a little bit about it, and I, I know I sent you the invitation for our, our meeting next week, and I was just mentioning that Dan and Todd, that, you know, they might be interested in attending. Uh, David Golden's gonna be there, and my understanding from conversations I've had, unless things change, is that if your county applies for round two and gets sixty points out of a hundred on the application, then you would get that minimum half million.
Now, is that the one that we have to hold it for three years?
You have, you have to own the property, um, before you demo it. You only have to hold it for three, you, you don't have to hold it if you have a, a certain end use for it. It can go for a sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
There are certain criteria you can use, pretty much one of the land bank things, to turn it over and not have to hold it. There are some, you cannot simply sell it to somebody to build a house around. That's either, uh, any certain criteria, which David's gonna talk about next week. But you may end up holding some, but it's a vacant lot, and, you know, you could have an agreement with that municipality or township to maintain it, if they're willing.
Okay.
There are, it can be made pretty easy to hold some though.
Okay, now, this isn't just demolition now, this is round two, right? It's just rehab also?
Uh, no, it's not rehab, it's demolition.
Okay.
Uh, you can use, uh, part of that money, they will allow you to use up to twenty-five thousand dollars per property.
Okay.
The primary thing is demolition.
Okay.
You can use some money to acquire.
Okay.
Lot of it you'll get through foreclosure, but, you know, if by paying a thousand or two thousand dollars, someone will sign it over to the land bank.
Okay.
You, you could do that. You, um, you can tax certificates here? Do you sell tax lien?
Yes, yes, oh, yes.
Okay, then, um, that, we're gonna discuss that at the meeting next week as well. You can sell a tax lien to the land bank very inexpensively, and then let the land bank foreclose on that to take ownership. Um, you, the money also, you know, besides the demo, you can also use up to five thousand dollars to landscape the property, to green it in some way.
Okay, so there's certain parameters on what you can use the money's for. Now, is this from those five big banks still, or is this from, where's this money from?
This is money that, um, was, came from treasury to states that they called the hardest-hit states.
Okay.
It had basically been used for foreclosure prevention, for refinancing, um, aimed at keeping people in their homes. We, the study that, that our organization did, showed treasury, the Department of Treasury, that demolition does in fact reduce foreclosures. It, it either maintains or increases value of surrounding properties and impacts foreclosures, to decrease foreclosures. They then said some of that money that was set aside for the hardest-hit program can be used for demolition. In Ohio, then, the, oh, Ohio Housing Finance Agency has been administering the hardest-hit program, so they're also administering this program. They've called it the Neighborhood Innovation, or, I keep forgetting, what's the I in, the IP program? Initiative, okay, I'm sorry, the Neighborhood Initiative Program. Uh, it is money, you know, as I said, for demo, acquiring the property, uh, maintaining it. There's four hundred dollars here to maintain, you have money, you can green it. So you can spend up to twenty-five thousand dollars, you don't have to spend that much.
Right.
So you could use that twenty-five thousand and actually demo two.
Well, see, that was my major concern, it's sounding a little better now, because I'm thinking of holding properties, how much is that gonna cost us, and, you know, can we do that, can we afford to do that?
And you'll be holding vacant property, I mean, you're gonna hold it a little while while you can get the demo taken care of.
Yeah, right.
But then afterwards, if you are holding it, it's a vacant lot. But there are ways you can dispose of it that meet their requirements.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, in the second round, this county could get half a million dollars by completing an application, and I was just talking to, uh, Dan and Todd, as far as, you know, that, it is something that could, it'd be accomplished without a whole lot of pain.
Right. Well, what's the downside of this, Robin? I mean, what, can you see any downside? I mean, the, we get hung up on something.
I mean, there's gonna be paperwork a little more than, um, than moving Ohio forward, but you guys seem to become pretty good at paperwork.
Todd has done outstanding job. His organizations, Lisa, Lisa, is Lisa here?
There are, yeah.
How come you guys sitting up here?
There, there are.
Oh, you know what, I took the chair. Okay.
There, there is one quirk, yeah, there is one quirk in it, but it, you know, once you understand it, it can be accomplished.
Okay.
Because this is mortgage, it's foreclosure prevention, and it's related to mortgage bills, there has to be a way of putting a mortgage of some sort, or lien of some sort, onto the property
Okay.
for a buck, a hundred bucks, that then will end up getting paid off. So, there is, you know, there is some.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we have all the facts, 'cause I don't wanna step on any landlines.
Well, I would suggest, I mean, are you able to come?
Yeah, that's what David said.
Wednesday.
Was that the thing we talked about going to before?
I think it is, Todd, gosh, it's been a, you know, I, so many things.
I sent out the agenda late yesterday.
Yeah, okay.
So, uh, if, uh, we said Dave Golden, who's the program manager, will be there, and we're allowing a lot of time for questions, but I think there is an opportunity. I have three counties who will be forming landbanks within the next few weeks, within the next month, and they're planning on applying.
How many counties do we have now, Robin?
Right now, there are eighteen landbanks, and there are three more that look like they're.
Beginning, okay.
So, but those that did not apply in the first round are gonna, you know, gonna get priority. If they, you know, come write the application appropriately. Todd, you've looked at it, right?
Yeah, there's, there are a couple of other little quirks in there, like, it only is for, you know, it's one to four-unit buildings, like, the Wyndham buildings are six units, so they wouldn't be eligible.
They would not be eligible?
Not, not, they're over four.
Okay.
And then, you know.
I wonder why that is.
And then, as Robin mentioned, I don't know, as Robin mentioned, the.
It's you, Rob.
I, I think we could use the DTAC money that we have in the fund for those.
Yes.
That's what it's for, Kathleen, and I mean, I just wanna be very careful how we use it, because I, you know, I wanna be very accountable in these schools.
And I apologize if this is common knowledge, but what's the application deadline on phase two?
For phase two, I believe it's June thirtieth. You know, there is, there is.
Fifty years.
If you apply and are granted the money, you have twelve months from the time you apply to take ownership of the properties and either be holding them or have already demoed them.
Okay.
Okay, if you don't have that within twelve months, they can pull the money back and give it to someone else. So that's your downside.
No, you said there was, we could get five hundred thousand, but are there increments that you would qualify for? Like, maybe we'd get three hundred thousand for some, or is it just five hundred or something?
In the first round, smaller counties, the minimum was half a million dollars.
Right, I know.
Middle size was two.
The phase two is, does that come in increments?
At this point, from what Dave Golden told me, it's not in writing yet. He said those counties that did not apply would, can get the minimum.
Okay, but we did apply for the first round. Oh, we're not talking about moving Ohio forward?
No, 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 this is the.
Okay, so we, so we would get the five hundred thousand if we applied and had, got sixty points or whatever.
Yeah, if you get a sixty percent.
Right, sixty percent, okay.
Yeah, we're guaranteed the five hundred minimum, and then he said that, I talked to them, they said that we'd be eligible to compete for any additional funding, we can ask for more than five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
You know, um, we don't have a really big plan in place currently.
Oh, we're definitely getting a plan.
I think we'd be better suited for that, but, you know, we're guaranteed a minimum of five hundred thousand.
Oh, wow, okay. Is it premature to make the motion to apply?
Well, it, no, because that wouldn't really, I mean, if we made the motion and passed it, that wouldn't mean we had to. I mean, we could always resent, you know?
Yeah, it can authorize.
Right.
A motion to authorize.
Sure.
Aye.
Do you wanna make that motion, Kathleen?
A motion to authorize the application for the Kathleen dollars from the Ohio, what's the name of this?
Hardest-hit, hardest-hit fund, is that what Ohio Housing Finance?
Is this considered the phase two, or no? The one that they're talking about?
This is phase two of the hardest-hit funds, right?
The hardest-hit fund's phase two. I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, we don't need a roll call for that, do we, Dan? Law favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, thanks.
Aye.
There was sixty million available, they, they allocated a little under fifty million during the forty-nine something in the first round. Said they would hold back ten million for the second round.
Okay.
So that's what you would be going.
I remember talking about this before, now, we didn't think we were ready in that phase one because we were busy with this grant. Now, it's coming back.
Yeah, and there is a deadline, of course, for you to use the money, but the worst case is, is you don't use it.
Right.
It goes, you know, they pull it back and it goes somewhere.
Right. Okay, well, just like the moving Ohio forward.
Yeah, it's, it's a little tighter regulation.
Right.
But, no, to, you know, not to a point, but I, I think, you know, you're ready. But you're willing to take ownership, you know, hold it till you're ready to demo it, and in some cases, you'll need to hold that up.
Okay.
If you were just to sell it to someone, you know, who's not a neighbor, just to sell it, that lien for the cost of the demolition would have to be paid.
Okay.
If you hold it, it's free and quick.
Okay.
And I think you'll learn a lot if you can come next week.
Sure. You're up, Todd.
Oh, okay, so we passed out a couple of things again. Um, this is similar to this form we passed out at the last meeting. It shows how much money has been given, so the far left-hand bottom, the left-hand totals, how much has been reimbursed to us by the state. And that, that number is, you know, three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. The middle column, that's seventy-six thousand, that's, that's been sent to the state asking for money to come back, and that should come back soon. Um, then we have another six hundred, almost six hundred and fifty thousand encumbered, you know, actually a contract signed for a grant total of one million and fifty-seven thousand, uh, total. Um, there is some things I'd wanna bring to your attention on that, though, is the Manaway, there's two hundred and fifty, fifty-one dollars encumbered for a, a survey that, that Manaway Township has since rescinded the resolution to tear that down. The, the property owner's made some improvements to the program.
Oh, well, that's a good thing.
So I think we, did you pass up the?
I don't know the text, the back of the packet.
The letter back of the packet is what it is to cost of that, and then there's another one in Franklin Township. We actually signed contracts, the demo of the, of the house in Franklin Township, and there's been a injunction on that one to stop the demolition. Um, Chris Manderi's been working with the township and the property owner, and they've given, the township's negotiating like a six-month, you guys.
Fix it up?
Fix this up in six months, and we're, before, the, um, the owner of the property owner is making a, you know, this is a.
Good faith, okay.
A good faith effort to, um, do that, I guess, Liz was saying today, that she heard that you actually want to live in there now, or just not living there currently, so they're gonna, we're, you know, so we're not gonna demo that one, we're gonna cancel that contract, and, uh, we want, we'd like to pay the, at least the asbestos survey that was done in that property, and then, again, that's on the memo.
Sure.
Uh, I think we've talked about reimbursing those folks, I don't think we are, you know, formal action. We need that, you guys can take that formal action now, I think, or at the end of the meeting, or whenever you wanna do it, but we need to something, some sort of formal action on that.
What is the action we need?
Well, just, just to authorize, and this would be paying the contractor with DTAC dollars, so I need to point that out there. It's just approving this memo here at the end, that the two months are, I listed at the bottom, the one in Manaway is two hundred and fifty-one dollars, uh, the, the survey that we planned on, that's just four hundred dollars.
So this is not moving Ohio forward, my instincts could be that.
So it is, because we can't get any.
Right, right.
You know, technically.
Well, you know what, I, I don't like that it's tense, however, that's what we wanted to happen, is the communities to come in and, and do something with the properties, unless they just want.
The one thing that Chris Manderi did say, the one in Franklin Township, he, he is going to require the owner to repay that money back to the land bank.
Okay.
But it'd be on, kinda like a payment thing, kinda thing, the land bank and the township, the expenses that have been.
Okay, so that won't go, you'll just go back in the DTAC fund then?
Right.
Yeah, so that money, that money there, the four hundred dollars that we've been paying for that one, will come back.
Okay.
And, and I guess in both cases, you know, the, the, the reason why the township's rescinded, or at least, at least in the case of Manaway, is, is to reuse the site or reuse the house and fix it up, so.
Okay.
In a way, that's, you know, a lot cheaper than spending the money in demo.
I'll make a motion to authorize the expenditures of two fifty-one, two hundred and fifty-one dollars for the Herman Grove Manor Township property, and the four hundred dollars for the Crestwood Lane Franklin Township property to be paid from the DTAC funds.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Law favor, aye?
Aye.
Now, Dan will be getting something to pay.
Yeah, I'll put an email and the invoice, if I didn't have one of them otherwise.
Okay, okay.
The, um, the next sheet, this is kinda similar to the way we used to do it, and I, we, whatever, right now, we have a tab, but the last meeting we were asking, kinda show the ones that were still in progress, you know, where the, what the costs were. I think the idea there, though, was to know what the actual costs were, and the problem is, is to, you know, until we get the asbestos survey back and somebody gives us a cost, we don't know what the payment costs are gonna be. But we listed everything that we know that's encumbered, you know, in, in here, and then the only things that aren't encumbered is the, the areas that are determined. All of these on this list are in the phase one money. Out of that list that I gave you, or just was talking about a moment ago, where we have a one million and fifty-seven thousand encumbered, we believe that the un, the undetermined amount, which is guiding that fifty-seven, one million and fifty-seven thousand number, would probably be around forty to sixty thousand dollars, somewhere in there.
Could you take us right up to the thing for property, right?
Yeah, they'll take us very close, but it looks like we may be a little under. Uh, the city did give us, last week, I think it was, gave us another house to demo, so we're gonna, we were gonna put that in the phase two money, but if the survey, the asbestos survey comes back clean, some of them do come back clean, most of them do not.
Okay.
If it did come back clean, we'd like to put that into the phase one money if we can get it done by the end of, end of May. We're also gonna be asking Attorney General Ron if it's okay if we have an overlap between two, since we do have phase two money, and get an opinion from Attorney General on, allowing that, that way, that would get us up to, or maybe over, the nine million and one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Now, Todd, does it actually have to be finished by May thirty-first, or can it be started before May thirty-first and be okay?
Demolitions have to be finished by the thirty-first.
Have to be finished, okay.
And then all the invoices will be paid by the end of, you know.
Yeah, so it was part of that conversation, so long as we get you the invoices by the end of June for the Kent one.
Okay.
It may not be demoed by the end of May, but.
Okay, but as long as they're paid.
So, um, on, on this, on this list here, we only have about six units that are unknown at this point. Going to, to another, going to this page, this is the phase two monies, we have way too many units to do. Um, on that, on the, on the phase two money, we have, the phase two money, we have thirty-seven thousand, almost thirty-eight thousand dollars of money for actual demolition. Um, there's a, the, the one property on Hayes Road and Ravenna, and also the Cherry Street one, which we just talked about, are in there. We also have five from Nelson Township, they submitted, they submitted a request for information prior to that February fifteenth date, plus we have four more City of Kent in there. And the way we've been doing is. And the way we've been doing is, that then, you know, we talked about the last meeting, the first come, first served, when you're ready to go.
Right.
Um, if we can get the Cherry Street one into the, the phase one money, then that would free up some money, you know, and we probably, we probably can do between three and four units with the phase two money.
Okay.
I don't, we don't, we don't want to do over encumbered, the, the land bank.
Right.
And they, over and above, I know we're not going to hit the numbers perfectly, either over, or under, or above. And we talked about the last meeting, that if you're 10,000, or maybe even 20,000 over, that would probably still be something to be okay with.
Right.
But we didn't want to go that crazy with it.
Right.
So.
Robin?
I could make a suggestion, if you look at the, those requested for the state's new money.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, the link to tax status on these, if they are going.
Okay.
Eligible for foreclosure, these are properties you might want to hold over for the additional half a million. Because, you know, if their taxes are paid up to date, it's going to be more difficult to acquire that property, but if it is foreclosure eligible, and, you know, you are going to apply, you know, for that money, you can start the foreclosure process now so that you will own it. You can take ownership of that property.
You know, obviously, I can't say for sure, but I would almost bet you they're behind on their taxes, because that's just the way it is, yes.
Right, so you may want to look at those and see which of those you feel are, you know, going to be easiest to foreclose on, or most logical to fore, to foreclose on. Uh, because that process is going to take some time. And one way of getting additional points when you fill out this application?
Yeah, I was wondering about how you get points.
Well, it's, it's listed in the application.
Right, and that's why I don't want to go into it, because I, we don't want.
But there's, there's one part that's called a pipeline, and these are properties that are, you're going to own, that are on the way to your ownership.
Okay.
Either you own now, or are in foreclosure, the foreclosure's been filed. So, by having, you know, half a dozen or more properties that you have in your pipeline to foreclose on, you can list those on the application, and by having something in the pipeline, that's 15 points.
Don't let Rob hear you say this.
What?
I said, don't let Rob hear you say this. You're listening, aren't you, Rob?
In fact, on the original application, there was a minimum, for example, I think for Lorain, the minimum was 2,000, 2 million dollars.
Uh-huh.
They had provided a list to the treasurer of properties that needed to come down and were delinquent, provided it to him to start the foreclosure process. So, they listed enough properties in their pipeline that they could request, I think they requested about 8 million, and I think they got 6.
Wow.
But, because for every property in your pipeline, they've.
So many points.
They, it's, gives you the 15 points, plus they can give you up to 25,000 dollars for everything in your pipeline, over and above the minimum.
Mm-hmm.
So, it would be very good for you to have some properties in foreclosure. So, I would take a look at those properties that the community wants to take down, and.
There's actually more, it's just that I just pulled people, you can send them to me, but I'll tell Eric we don't need it.
But, but, you know, if they're vacant and abandoned, and they're foreclosure eligible, you know, maybe we'll start foreclosure. Worst case is, is if you decide, you know, they're in foreclosure, you know, they'll go for sale, and, you know, someone may buy them. If they don't, they'll be forfeited.
Right.
But starting foreclosure action, you know, is, makes more sense than letting.
That's a very good point, because I, I hadn't even thought of that. I mean, I didn't realize you got points for, in the pipeline, you know?
Yeah, it's, uh, you know, Summit County only applied for their base 2 million, because they did not have properties in the pipeline.
Okay.
And they were one of the few that was honest, and said they did have properties in the pipeline.
Okay, Todd.
Well, I guess what, what she's saying is, is, is good, because we had to turn away, like Streetsboro had seven, and they couldn't get their stuff to us by February 15th, so we said, well, there you go, a lot of higher.
So, maybe we need to call Streetsboro back.
Yeah, exactly, we should call them, that higher's got some.
Online.
Ravenna City has a couple more, and I know Jim DePaul is working heavily on getting more, um, in the township, so, and there's more out there.
I think we have some more, too.
And once you, once you own it, you don't have to go through the whole confirmation process.
All right.
If you own a property, and you want to tear it down, you can tear it down. Now, it does have to be, obviously, you've got the property.
I understand, I understand.
But, uh, but it takes, you know, while it's more cumbersome on one side, it's less cumbersome on the other, because you don't have to wait for the time that will take township trustees, and then you go here, and it goes there, and, you know.
Well, you have a very good understanding of this, I can tell, and I just said I.
And those are all things that are going to come up.
Yeah, I need a good understanding before, I feel comfortable on.
On this phase two list, one thing I wanted to be clear on, so there's no confusion, is when we, we listed the Nelson Township, um, and we have priorities 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the township made those, set those priorities, because we said we may not be able to take them down if we take one down or two down, which one was your first?
So, they're saying which ones they want first, so, okay.
Right, I didn't want, I didn't want anybody to think that we were saying that's our priority.
Okay.
That was theirs. And also, also the yellow on the side, those are bond, those middles are voluntary, and they won't have liens against them. And then also, what I attached to you is this list here of these demos, and then the yellows are voluntary demos, maybe they're all from 3 days late, and they didn't pay back on the state on those.
No, most of them, yeah, most of them are, are, have been levered from the state, but there are two on there that are, the demolition is completed, but were getting ready to get them to be levered on.
And so, this, and this also shows the total cost of the entire demo, just to put it in person, I guess, between them, they're, they're all over the, all over the map, so to speak. In fact, that's one of the things we're going to do, too, is, is, in the, at the next meeting, put them on a map, so you can see where all the demos have been.
Oh, that would be good.
Um, also, I don't, and this is just a side note, is that we're finally demoing the ones in Wyndham Village, uh, next week, I believe, so, that would be exciting. We were out there, we were out there last week. Looks like, looks like Beirut on Community Road.
I'm sorry about that.
No, no, you're fine, no, just the asbestos being torn off a building, where you see it's, um, tar paper and old wood slash shingles.
You know, though, Rob, everybody that hears about this, they are so happy.
Well, it's amazing, if you haven't been over to see it, it's, it's a major project, it looks, looks terrific. Thank you, Lisa. And so, I, I guess if you don't have any questions, I'll conclude my report for now. Oh, I, I do have, I guess I, I did have some correspondence with the owners of those buildings out there, and we never wanted to give those, give those to the land bank.
Some high agendas.
Okay, I'll, I'll let you talk about that.
Okay.
And then the other is that I was invited to meet with people at the First Committee Bank, and, and I know you knew about that, Vicki, and maybe, and I was happy to meet with them. Maybe more appropriate to have maybe the finance committee or the selection committee meet with them, I don't know, but, but they wanted, what they were suggesting to do was to somewhat, come up with some way where we could use D-TAC money to help rehab some of their houses, sell the houses, and then reimburse the land bank once the houses are sold.
Mm-hmm.
And there probably is a way to, to make that worth our while, rather than get a zero-sum gain out of that.
Right.
If you did that, you would want some sort of gain out of that, and I don't think I was the appropriate person to negotiate that.
Well, Dominic approached me when we first did this land bank, and I told him, I said, as far as rehabbing, I said, I can't even talk about that right now, because we're not even on our feet with the demolishing.
Right.
So, I mean, I do know that, you know, that, that, there's a market in that with banks, I mean, to partner with them and get our money back, and it's a win-win.
It is.
Can you quote, will you? You can put your press there, you can.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe we do a TV show, yeah.
But, I mean, you know, obviously, we're all wanting what's best for the county, and, and, and get these houses, like I said, back on the back roads, and get them, and get rid of the flights, and all that good stuff. Okay, is that it, Todd?
No, it isn't.
Okay. I don't think there are any standing committee reports, unless some committees, not that I don't know about, I don't know if finance committee, or, um, policies committee. I think Kathleen, if you'd be willing, you and I and Robin will kind of communicate and get together before our next meeting and see what we need to do with those bylaws. Bridget's on vacation, like I said, so, nothing's happened there, there's no executive committee. I know you want to talk, Rob.
I got two, two quick things, I won't keep y'all dead.
That's okay.
And, you know, it's, it's like I paid Todd and, uh, Robin to, to segue for me here, but those are my, those are the, the two points I wanted to bring up, which is in our demo program, I think, everybody's really proud of, I think we've done a lot more than we anticipated being able to do.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, kudos to everybody in the room, I think that's, that's fantastic. Um, but I am still concerned about finished product as well, I mean, other than demoing, you know, one of the big key points, uh, like the, the houses we brought down, I think 11 or 12 of them were by one owner, real bad owner, never paid his taxes, terrible tenants, it, uh, you know, just, just a bad scene in there. And that's the, uh, that's the owner that we talked about getting just permission to tear it down. That owner still owns the property, the lender's been very cooperative, but now we've got a situation, once these come down, we're going to have almost half a city block, that's owned by an owner that I know isn't going to take care of the property, so we're going to get, be in a situation where we're maintaining it, and then trying to assess those fees back to the owner, who already owes almost 100,000 in back taxes.
And you're.
And it, it may be worth 5,000 dollars when it's redeveloped and, and ready for sale, so.
Why aren't you foreclosing?
We can't, we don't, um, we don't, they don't owe us the back taxes.
Why aren't we foreclosing?
That went through Jared, and I think, well.
Yeah, we, we, originally, we, we took that path, but it, uh, the prosecutor's office, I think the land bank was too new at that point.
No, but I, I don't think it's necessarily connected to the land bank. I think they're torn down, they've got empty property, they're 100,000 behind in their taxes, but we couldn't take this foreclose.
Well, they're not torn down yet, we can, and that's my request.
That's a time thing, okay.
Well, my, my proposal, you know, now the, the owner's like, hey, I don't, I don't want these, the lender's been, been, been more than cooperative, and sure, they're not going to contest the foreclosure. I don't know whatever's ease, whatever, whatever the easiest process is, I'm sure Chad could, could weigh in on that, whether it's an administrative foreclosure, or whether both parties with an interest in it can, can donate it to the land.
Rob, do you want to get with Chad about that in private, the sooner the better?
Yeah, well, that was, that was going to be what I was going to ask, you know, it would be all right if I went ahead and pursued, you know, they.
Sure.
Eventually, the land bank doesn't want the property, they don't want the headache of maintaining it, but it's right across from our baseball fields and rec areas, we will maintain it regardless.
Mm-hmm.
So, we'd like to own that property and control its, its end-use.
Rob?
Well, what, what it sounds like you're saying is, the taxes are far in excess of the value of the property.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
The land bank could acquire that property, it would go through foreclosure, if the taxes are more than the value of the property, it would not go to share of sale, it would automatically go to the land bank. You could turn it over, if the city was interested, you could immediately turn it over to them. When the city would get it, it would be free and clear of any liens.
Right.
The advantage of it going through foreclosure is if there is some lien out, hidden lien out there, um, you know, so you're saying the bank is willing to erase their lien, property owner's willing to turn it over, um, there still could be some liens out there.
Yeah, for, and.
Has that been checked, Rob, you have?
Yeah, we've checked, I mean, we did, uh, when we tore these down, we had to do the title search, so, you know, we have that, but that's, the discussions we had with, uh, with our village solicitor was just that, the cleanest, best title you can have is a foreclosure title, because, like you said, anything that was unknown is too bad, it's, it's gone.
And that's what I think the land bank initially said, that you will take properties as long as you have an end-use.
Right.
And it sounds like there's an end-use, right here.
On that one, I would, I would like to show Chad, see, um, you know, what the process is, and, and begin that, because we're going to say, we're going to start mowing it in a month.
Uh-huh.
You know, whenever these are down and it's, it's seeded, we'll, we'll maintain it from there, because this property owner, uh, lives up in, uh, Robin's neck, who lives up in Moreland Hills, and he doesn't come down to, to wind them very often, and he.
He does live in Moreland Hills?
Yeah.
I'll cut our meeting.
Yeah.
That's why he's living in Moreland Hills, he doesn't pay his taxes.
Yeah, yeah, well, his, his house is pretty nice, but, um, okay, well, I'll, I'll pursue.
Go forward on that, Rob.
The other one's sort of in the same vein, um, although I, I don't think these properties are qualified for the phase two, because they're going to be six-unit project buildings, just like these ones that I've torn down, but we have at least three, maybe more, um, depending, we'll shake the trees here and figure out. But I know I have at least three more buildings that are right in front of our elementary school that we've condemned, they're vacant, we've disconnected all the utilities, and that lender, um, wants to actually assign the village their interest in the mortgage, so we can foreclose on it. Same process, they owe taxes, we're not exempt from paying back taxes without all the levy participants.
So, that could go through the land bank, too, Rob?
Number of options, and I think, you know, now that there's interest, I think, you know.
On those three properties, the, the owner isn't interested, he, he's already, this has already went through bank foreclosure, but the bank will not pay the filing fees, because they'll have to pay the back taxes.
Mm-hmm.
So, they, you know, sort of gets stuck in that limbo, and either one of these interested parties want it, we do, because what we'll do is, we'll, again, we'll secure it, we'll mow it, we'll clean it up, and then when money is available to tear it down, we'll, we'll actually own the property.
Right.
And be able to, to apply and get it done quick, and not get stuck in the truth for a scenario.
And there are delinquent taxes on this.
Yeah, yeah, same, same thing.
The property owner could deed it to the land bank and lure a foreclosure.
And he would be willing, the second one would be willing to do that, is that correct?
I, I believe so, the, the lender's been the more aggressive one on there, because they, they've already gotten their, their judgment, foreclosure, and they're saying, well, we'll, we, we will assign that to the village, and you can finish it.
If it goes in deed and lure foreclosure to the land bank, the market can simply release there.
Right, okay, well, I'll have our.
But would, would they, I mean, is there a problem with it?
Well, you don't, you want it all in writing.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They're, they're willing to, if they're willing to sign over their lien, you'd think they would be willing to.
Yeah, the, the lender's quote to me was, they, they don't care what happens, they'll sign off on anything, as long as the owner doesn't get any money out of it.
Oh, that's pretty clear.
That's pretty, pretty easy, so, um, as Giorgis says, is the, is the lender on that. So, I mean, there's, you know, I guess that's kind of a pipeline and group of properties, but I don't know that it's necessarily a pipeline for this Hardest Hit, because those are six units, so.
Right, but still, I think there's a way that we can make that happen.
Yeah, and I think, I said, I think the village Wyndham has more that we can, if, if that's a program that, that we want to start getting familiar with and setting up, we'll definitely be a big participant in it, because we have several properties that the owners have basically walked away from their financial destitute. The lenders don't want it, because it's a liability, it's not an asset, and it's sitting there with nothing to do, and I think, you know, this is, this is a perfect, um, solution, is you, you start getting them into administrative tax foreclosure, start putting them into the land bank, the village can, can enter into whatever freely, because we're going to maintain them.
Sure.
And understand the land bank doesn't want to take on.
Right.
That cost and headache throughout the county, so, I'll, I'll pursue both of those, unless I have an objection here, either one of them's a back page.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add, or do you want to say something else, Robin?
The only thing I, I just glanced at the agenda, unless there's something on the back page I'm not seeing, is there any discussion today about hiring someone?
Well, well, that's what our finance committee was meeting, and, and then we didn't have, everyone couldn't come, and now Bridget's on vacation, and.
I blew it.
Where are we with that, Dan?
Yeah, I think we need to just schedule a time to meet.
Okay.
I mean.
Well, I know you sent me something after that, and I answered you, and then you're always so quick to get back with me, so I didn't know.
Right, and we'll, we'll need to get a time where everybody fits everybody's schedule.
When's Bridget coming back?
Hopefully, ASAPD, I guess.
Yeah, when's Bridget coming back?
Um, she's back Monday.
Okay, let me ask you this, would it be okay if Robin sat in on that, or is that a, some kind?
I, I don't think there's a problem with that.
I, I think kind of, as far as hiring someone is.
Just, I, is job description what, you know?
And what, what you're talking about, if we're waiting meeting to meeting to meeting, things are going to take a while. If you have somebody who's going to be doing all of.
In between meetings.
Have everything lined up, that he or she would then come.
Yeah.
To the board, and, you know, since the law changed back in September, allowing county offices to, to serve functions, um, Richland County, for example, their land bank is like this, and they're bringing, they've hired someone who's going to be working in the treasurer's office, who formerly worked with the person who handled the demos in the city of Mansfield.
Mm-hmm.
She's stepping over, she's done all of the work from moving Ohio forward, she's stepping into the land bank, working for the treasurer,
Mm-hmm.
and they're not skipping a beat.
Right.
On this, um, and Ashkabula County had a part-time person working with them, who's been helping with land bank research. She now is, the land bank is paying, going to be paying the treasurer's office to have her do land bank work. So, there's, you know, a lot of opportunities that we could sit down.
See, I guess I'm a little unclear as to how that would work, I know we had talked before, and it came about that, uh, the offices, they could have a person in their office also work with the land bank. And I have to tell you, I really can't spare anybody, and I know the commissioners, I mean, they're giving a step.
No, but you could, you could hire someone.
To work for the treasurer's office.
Who would work beyond your payroll.
Okay.
The land bank could have an agreement with your office.
Okay.
That will, could. ...that could cover the salary, the benefits, the new computer they could probably need to buy, um, those couple items, and then the land bank would set up, within the agreement, what that person would do.
Okay.
I mean, she would basically, he or she would, would sit in your office...
Okay.
...technically be a treasurer's employee, but do the work as part of the agreement.
Okay, now...
Now, Rob, and there are other entities that, you know, that would like consideration for that.
Oh, it could be, I'm sorry.
I think Rob's choosing this and saying it's a little bit...
It could be the treasurer's office, could be the commissioners' or the auditor's office. Those are the three offices that...
Or it could also be another entity working.
You could hire an entity, yeah.
Yes, we've got RPC, for example, that has been doing...
I'm just starting to...
And basically, it's what the land bank board chooses to do. I'm just giving some suggestions.
No, Maureen, that's a very good comment, because obviously, we know more about that kinda stuff than I do, I mean, and, and you guys have done an outstanding job.
Well, from what I heard, I thought Rob was suggesting to take Lisa from my office to...
That's what they did in, uh, Richland County.
That doesn't sound fair. Oh, I'd never take Lisa, I'm near her.
Right, right.
That's salary, right.
There are lots of options, Maureen, I wasn't trying to, I'm just giving some examples of, of counties that are really getting re-rolling, and it's just, you need someone at this point, you know, I mean, Rob has a lot of ideas there, you're saying, yes, let's look at them, well, who can do it?
Who's, yeah.
You know, you can't, you don't have time to do it, you don't have time to do it, you need somebody who's gonna be able to do the legwork, and, you know, maybe Todd's organization now doesn't have, have the time...
Well, no, they do not have the time now.
...to do it, but, if there was an agreement between the land bank and his organization that paid enough for him to hire...
Yeah.
...an individual.
So, we would share that person, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying, you would have a contract with Todd's organization...
Okay.
...for X number of dollars a month.
Okay.
You would most likely need to hire someone...
Okay.
...to help to do the work, and it could be, he has you do the work, but hire somebody to do other level stuff that kind of frees you up, but there's so many different options, and if you're gonna come to the finance...
You know, yeah, I wish you would.
Let's do that.
Let's get that kinda clear.
Again, we've talked about it for a while.
I wanna make sure people know that I didn't...
That you didn't suggest this.
I did not, I did not contact Rob and ask her to say these things.
No.
I didn't contact you to say these things.
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying, there are, there may be other organizations out there too, but I think you just need to decide which way you wanna go.
I, I would, I would like to speak in favor of having the finance committee consider seriously the idea of providing funds to the regional planning commission, so that they can either have Lisa do it, which they've done a great job so far, or maybe hires, use the money to hire someone to free her up, uh, to do this, because we've gotten excellent service so far, so we should probably take advantage of that.
And, and this isn't something that you have to bid, um, this is the decision of the land bank board as to how they wanna move ahead.
Right.
You know, and, and you could hire someone yourself, but then you have the whole hassle of the payroll and the benefits, a person who wouldn't be empty here as...
I don't wanna get into that, Rob, I really don't, 'cause then we're gonna need another person to take care of that stuff.
Yeah, for, for smaller county, there are a lot of options that can make sense, it can happen relatively quickly, but, you know, it's been talked about for, for many months.
All right.
Probably time to...
When's Bridget coming back from vacation, the Monday?
She's back Monday.
Okay, so, uh, it'll be the finance committee, and I'll contact you some availability days. Dan's got this neat little program that's...
I'll send it out.
I love it.
I'll include Rob.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
If you could, if you want me to meet about the biologs and with finance committee, could you try and do it the same day?
Sure, no, we want you to come here as many times as possible. Yeah, we will.
And if there's a few hours in between, just give me a desk with, uh, your password for your number.
Sure. It'll be fine. No, very good points, I'm, I'm truly glad you were here today to make those points, because as you know, we're still kinda green, I think we've learned a lot and we've moved forward, but there's still a lot to learn. Uh, does anyone else have any comments? John?
Um, I have a question for Todd, the sheet with the Phase Two, Todd. Are these all, I mean, how current is this?
Uh, very current, as of today.
I mean, so, these are all out there somewhere, right?
Yes, they're all out there somewhere.
What's, what's been on the list from here?
Yeah, they, well, the Nelson Township has...
Except for the ones...
They, but they submitted their request prior to the February fifteenth deadline, and what we're waiting on in them is the three days that expire, so that we can go ahead and move forward on those.
The other thing I have, Vicki, um, we've got a property in Freedom, right at the intersection of State Road, seven hundred and three oh three, that has been deteriorating for, for about a year now, it's been vacant for almost a year, the lady, the seven hundred, been institutionalized, you know, in stages of dementia, and I talked to the son-in-law just maybe seven or eight days ago, uh, what their intentions were with that parcel, and he said that he and his wife, which is the daughter, one of the daughters of this widow, uh, had recently been thinking or discussing what to do with the property, the, the grass, I don't think was mowed at all last year, and it's right there in the heart of town, and, and it's two doors away from the last home that we had torn down on three oh three, and this son-in-law said that when he was talking to his wife about it, they even brought up the possibility of maybe donating the property to some group or whatever.
Wow.
So, I guess, you know, I hear what Todd's talking about, a parting property or whatever, uh, I don't think Freedom Township would be interested in a parting of the property, and unfortunately, the, the auditor's website says nine point nine nine acres, but when I, when I looked at the tax map this afternoon, the property's really like a hundred eighty-seven feet by a hundred and twenty feet, that's a difference.
Quite a difference.
Nine acres?
Well...
Point nine acres. Oh, I thought he said, okay, I thought he said nine point nine.
The auditor's website, I saw that somewhere.
Quite a differential.
Before I saw this on, uh, here, unglad it's...
Now, does this have a house on it, John? This isn't just a lot, it has a house on it, right?
There is, there is a house, yes.
What, what shape is the house in, I mean?
Well, the, the porch, the post holding up the roof on the porch are buckling and...
Is it contiguous to the other side that you had taken that?
No, unfortunately, there's a L-shaped lot that goes around that, that side, nine seven hundred and three oh three.
You could have a new building on it.
What, is it saved, pardon me, is the house beyond repair, or is it...
I don't know, I don't know, Rob, I mean, I, I haven't physically been on the property, I'm very reluctant to trash pass, you don't understand. I just, you know, when you're elected office, everybody, you know, people you don't know are watching, they're watching you, you know.
Saying, we saw John.
I gotta use enough things that I don't do, you know, every time today, um, you know, a resident who had a lost dog, was looking for their dog, and he, he said something to me a couple months ago on Christmas night, he says, you know, the garage is unlocked, he says, they got lawnmowers in there and everything. I said, well, I said, I wouldn't know. Yeah, we're looking for our dog, lifted the door up, and, you know, it was unlocked. The lady, I'm sure, is probably approaching, in her eighties maybe, you know, um, like I say, the son-in-law said, you know, the woman, I thought, should they discuss the one, if they could donate the property or something, it's candid for something, you know, and I, I know, you know, I guess, uh, issue is the, uh, end use of that property, I don't know, it's, it's small.
Well, the end use might be that it just gets consumed by a neighbor, but I think that, from a land bank standpoint, we've always been concerned about the cost of maintaining until there is an end use, um, and I know...
Are there neighbors close there, to their childhood?
Um, not really, I mean, I'm a couple hundred feet away, several hundred feet away.
If it were rehabbed, do you think somebody would be interested in moving it?
It's, it's possible, the, the location is not ideal, because it's right there at the intersection of a ma- major highway, it's one of the, one of the worst ten intersections of Orange County for particular accidents. The house itself is close to the road, um, I, I don't, you know, and it's not the ideal property.
Right.
If it was rehabbed, I, I really don't know, I mean, if making attractive rent was reasonable, I suppose, or, you know, the price was reasonable, but without being in there, I really don't.
And that's a difficult one there, I mean, it really is.
We'll keep that in mind, it's gonna be a pipeline-type project, if they're, the donator, or they can give it, it's at least something we consider.
Do you suggest we start passing some motions and resolutions and get the inspections done, or should we hold off?
Wouldn't it be wise just to make arrangements with the owners, and the owners find out what they wanna do, and if they wanna, just donate, accept that, as a county, as a community property, and then either flip it or demolish it. If you have ownership, you can do whatever.
For me, that's the more desirable way to go, is to, to go through that, 'cause one of the, one of the things we've gotten sensitive on, on this board is taking property that may not wanna be taken.
Oh, sure, sure.
And even talk about getting, getting a bad reputation in a hurry, it's, you know, it's fine when we're doing good things with the money, but, you know, as soon as someone loses...
Their home.
...their, their property to an aggressive land bank, it, it'll really go south, so, I, I always much prefer...
Kathleen, what are you suggesting the end use?
I suggest that he finds out if the owners really would be willing to...
To donate it.
If they'd be willing to donate either to the land bank or to the community.
Okay.
Then decide whether to flip the house and sell it, or to tear it down. If they wanna tear it down, then we'd be...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and then we would just own that property?
Well, no, we would sell it, I would guess.
Yeah, temporarily own it, yeah. We wouldn't own it unless we know somebody wants to buy it or take it at the end.
Donate to the parents or whatever.
No, and, and at that point, if the house was demolished, and the property could be sold, transferred to a joint property, then there'd be...
Oh, that would be ideal.
...a acre or so there to make a, a lot that, that could form a lot of acre and a half or whatever.
Oh, yeah, that, that would be ideal, there. That's why I said, are there any homes adjacent, you said, but, but I'm wondering, who owns that two hundred feet or whatever? Probably the property owner that lives there, right? Owns the two hundred feet between this property.
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
So, they may, you know, because we talked about that, it's not like...
I, I will take Kathleen's suggestion, and I will, the, the, the son-in-law was very receptive and civil, and I think almost relieved that somebody's looked into it. I'll, I'll contact them, and probably, the easiest thing would be to meet them out there and go through the house and see just how mad it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I don't think we need a motion for that, I mean, right?
No, that's just an action on Freedom Township's part.
Yeah, let's go do it, okay. Any more comments? Motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Everybody seconded?
Everybody seconded too. Was it that bad?
See, your son's picture is a favorite.
I can't handle that, I mean... You mean, you're walking away?
Go ahead, man.
I would... She needs a new mushroom, huh? Two thousand. I would see...
We're ready with target one oh one.
Okay, well, thank you. I'll push you in tomorrow. Okay, thanks, Rob.
It's like praying cats, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna hurt them. Somebody catches you. It's hard for Maureen now.
All right, um, we'll start with the resolutions.
I will move to approve the bills.
I'll second.
Whoever roll call, please.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll move to approve the wire transfer.
I'll second.
Whoever roll call, please.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Yes.
Move to approve the journal vouchers.
I will second.
Whoever roll call, please.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. Move to approve the NML.
I will second.
Um, I'll just, um, we'll do a roll call.
Then, and then just voice vote.
Oh, sorry, and, and, um, we're not on, are we on?
Yeah, I didn't translate, I forgot, but you are, you're on.
Okay, because someone told me earlier today that we weren't on, they tried to drill. Okay. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 I will move to approve the April first bills.
I will second.
Whoever roll call, please.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. I will move to approve the April first journal vouchers.
I will second.
Whoever roll call.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. I'll move to approve the April first NML.
I will second.
Uh, discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I will move to accept the donations to the Forty Twenty Door Wardens Office. And send the thank you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, all the, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll move to authorize the electronic application to the Ohio Department of Health for the Help Me Grow program through Javel Family Services.
I will second.
Um, is there discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 I will move to assign authority to the Director of Javel Family Services to authorize and request that she be able to sign the inter-county adjustment agreements on behalf of the county.
I will second.
Um, I'm very uncomfortable doing this, and...
Isn't this the one we talked about?
Yeah, we did talk about it, and I was reading through it this morning, and I don't know, I'd have to listen to the tape to be sure, but I thought we said that when we talked about it last time, that we would kind of like to be apprised beforehand, um, some way or another, because I guess the reason why, and if the two of you are comfortable, I'm fine with it, but the reason I feel uncomfortable about it is if, for instance, there's a grant and there's ten thousand left over, we don't need it, but another county does, and it's done, um, without, without our knowledge, without our knowing about it, I have a problem I have a problem with that. I think we need to know about it. Oh, okay. And it only happens like once a year, once every two years. It's very rare. And so I've had second thoughts. I don't know what we decided last time. I think I can recognize the importance of the reason maybe behind it. Politically, it's a lot easier for us not to know about it, I guess. But as far as citizens are concerned. So would you feel more comfortable if we actually had authority, signed off on? Yeah, do you think we could hold it for what? Was it going to hurt to hold it one week?
Yes, we can. I think.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, when we talked about it with her, I think, as she explained, it was to, because it wasn't only on the happen frequently. And I, I think we never would have wanted it to be done in a, however, certainly a vacuum or that we would not be again informed.
Appriser, yeah.
Right, right, that it was going to happen. So, I mean, if we need to clarify that with her.
Yeah, maybe just hold it so we have a chance to just think about it a little bit more.
Sure.
I don't think that's going to hurt anything to hold it one week. I can understand the benefit of it, because still, I'm very nervous about it, so.
Okay, we'll just hold it for the property.
Sure. But the incoming correspondence, do you want to help us with that, Deb?
Number one was an email from Jeff Barnes, right after he had attended the NPL meeting last week. He had some suggestion about the Brooklyn and those.
Oh, yeah. So we'd like him to proceed, right? Do we do a journal entry for him to proceed?
Well, let's see. Yeah, he's on vacation, so we're journalizing him to contact the EPA and start the process.
Right. So journal entry for Jeff to proceed. Number two.
Let me ask, did both of you garner from that, that, I mean, I really appreciate being informed and that it was available. There seemed to be a little bit of a void there as to if they would.
The homeowners?
They would apply for it. And we really have no one else to apply for it.
Right.
So we're just going to ask him to follow through and do that, right?
Well, come back to us anyway. Proceed to get the information of what we need to do. We need, we've already sent a letter, have we not, to the homeowners? Have we heard it from any of them?
I haven't heard a word.
Okay, so maybe we should go ahead then and proceed. Okay. But he'll come back to us with information. Is that all right?
Is that the letter that went out? I think.
To the landowners?
We got a message. But he was just calling because, did Amy send that out? Because he had, he had not received the message or the message. She had a list of people that had come to a meeting regarding.
That was not it.
That was not, it was a different one?
I want the property taxes and not all of the.
Would this not be a letter of his loyalty to get the grant? To get the application for the grant?
Well, this, this is the people, this is the dam. And this grant would be, give us money to take down the dam. But we notified, we sent a letter to all the people that are contiguous to the dam. And we've heard from none of them. In the letter, we indicated we probably were going to proceed taking it down, did we not?
It's one of your options, you said. Your investigating options, one of them is.
Yeah, because, okay, then the phone call I did get from the guy, he is one of the homeowners. He's not one of the seven that's impacted. But he is one of the, I guess, two hundred that's in that development that is going to be impacted by the removal of the dam. And I told him, because Amy had talked to his son, and she didn't realize he was a sixteen-year-old. And, and he said, oh, you don't have to send us anything, or we, my dad already knows about it. Well, then, of course, he called in. And so it was just a miscommunication. So I talked to him and Amy emailed a letter to him and she said, I mailed them Friday. You should be getting it either Monday or Tuesday. And once he got it, he's going to write a letter to us about his concern. Is the property values decreasing because they have lake privileges? And he's thinking that if the dams are removed and I, that it would decrease their values of their property. And he also, there was another thing that he was concerned with. Something about a hookup pump station that's right there for like the fire trucks. If there was a fire, that if for some reason we took the dam out and the, and the lake or whatever drained, there's no water. There's a pumping station hookup there. But I told him to put it all in writing, put a letter. Put it in writing and send it to us.
Yes, yes, good.
Because we had not made any decision for what the letter said. And if those are his concerns, we would definitely want to hear them, so.
Sure, there are two hundred homes around that dam.
No, it's the development that has the lake privileges to that area.
It seems strange that the, that it would be, is a deed restriction or something? Because since we own the property and we didn't, did they, did we give them?
I don't know. Well, he said that on all their deeds, they have what they call lake privileges to.
Okay, well, we'll wait for his.
Yeah, we'll have to see what it is. Maybe some other lake.
Yeah, and on the, on the journal entry, should we say, instead of proceed, say, bring more information or something? Did that affect Deb? Okay, all right, the second one.
Will be a journal entry to authorize payment to the fair as we do every year.
We do that every year.
By all our seat.
Okay. Number three, this is information only, I believe. Number four.
Number four, Mickey had made some suggestions to how to change the homeowner website to update commissioners and those sorts of things. So maybe we can add the information if the proposed entity data building hardly, you know, the websites and YouTube and all those sorts of things.
Okay, will he come back to us with, with anything else he was? Or is that what he did today?
I think, well, this is something different.
That was on the website.
Yeah, and I'll just email Brian and ask him to update unless we do.
Okay, yeah.
He's asking you.
Gave him information, just.
I think he emailed Maureen and Maureen copied us on his.
Changes. But I'm such a big, I can make sure if he's going to do it or I should do it.
Okay.
The leadership meeting is scheduled for April twenty-second. Does the board have any topics that you want to discuss? Or do you want just to make the introduction of the HR director?
Yeah, we'll have, today we're going to hire HR and we have a new EMA director by that time. And we have a new commissioner. So I think having that and taking any input that they wish to make.
Okay.
Sound good? Is that good? Maureen? Okay.
Let's see, number six. You've already moved your meetings from twenty-four, so that's done. And the land bank, you should be back by two o'clock. And that said, we should be done by one-ish, that should not be a problem to get back, so that does not make it a move. Number seven, the new EMA director is attending a conference.
We need to call Ryan and ask what his preference would be and then make the decision after that. So we can maybe just, I can call him and find out and then maybe talk to both of you and see.
Well, is he aware that there's going to be this exercise?
Well, that's what he, yeah, he is aware of it now. But I think we need to ask whether or not, in light of the fact that there is an exercise, would he want to do this or just wait?
Okay, yeah, I would.
Because you know what, as.
I would think he would want to be here.
Yeah.
He'll be here for the exercise regardless.
If he attends, I think it starts the twenty-second, twenty-third.
He began the two days before the exercise.
Before the exercise, yeah.
Well, okay, well, I would, I would hope that he's going to say he would prefer to be here, right, and get prepared for.
Get it, you'll call him?
This is up to the major, major exercise.
Number eight, does the board want to adopt a resolution in support of Strong Ohio Communities Committee?
Which number is that?
Number eight?
Yeah, I think this would be great if we did this.
Okay, I'll get that ready for you. What exactly is that?
It's, it's issue two, where the state bonds money. And then they use that money to, for economic development purposes. It's worked beautifully for the last many years, fifteen years or so. And so they want to renew it, they want to add to it as well. So it's going to be on the ballot. Almost everyone that I know that's involved in government likes it. The engineer would love it because it provides money for bridges and so forth. So, okay with you?
Yeah.
I'll get it ready.
All right. All right, anything for the referred? Um, is there anything, anything concerning the information only? Does number one need action?
Number one? For a permanent?
Yeah.
No, this, she's just responding to, I think it was an email from the state of the rebuild. She's got my information.
Okay. And then to the journal entries, we, we want to make a, we want to indicate that we are hiring Paul Janis as our new human resource director. So we do that as a journal entry?
Do you have a starting, thirty-first? Where's thirty-first?
Can you have a copy of the letter we sent, right?
I don't.
Well, it's probably, I'll make sure you get one.
For the journal entry, I'll need that. And then is somebody doing his paperwork? Is?
We want to issue the press release.
I have that ready to go.
And we want to issue the same thing, maybe with a different title, to all staff and other elected officials.
So I'll get that ready. And he'll do the motor vehicle check as well for the both directors, the EMA director and the HR director?
I guess all we can do is ask Michelle.
Yeah, I would, you know, Michelle Nasser.
Sure.
Okay, are there, any other items for journal entry that we haven't done yet or any other?
Did you talk about Todd's recommendations, version A and B for the use of the?
Oh, right, we need to do that, but I haven't done that. I don't even know where it is. Could I look at yours, Deb?
Sure.
Maybe I have it here.
Can Todd can do that? Do the A and B, the, the old can't regional business.
It's for the.
Can't regional business lines, NDS.
Yeah, NDS. Proposed Michael Lynn proposal. And Todd preferred the number B. I don't know that we have to do it today, but I think Maureen, you felt we should do it today. Although I haven't even had time to read this because I went to lunch.
I thought there was some, I don't know, uncertainty, but.
Could we call Todd back up? The quicker they could do that, the better, they might be able to assist some. Yeah, they want to.
Yeah.
Todd was saying that we should probably just do it for Garrettsville now.
Right, that's why B.
Yeah, that's B, right.
Yeah, because you know what, and I think David, Dave on emailed, and an email to you, Maureen, that he was saying.
Yes.
As well, he agreed because like there's laps between the insurance and stuff. And then like all the people, then their goods burn up, they have nothing.
The sooner they can do it, the better.
Yeah. But there was a question, I think, on the eligibility, because they've got pretty stringent ones. Like they had to be in business for three years and Todd was saying, well, what if they've only been in business two years?
I think that's what the waiving is, isn't it?
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, eligibility requirements will be waived. Instead, NDS is asked to evaluate each business.
With the exception of the proposed eligibility requirements, will be waived. Instead, NDS is asked to evaluate each business to determine.
There you go.
Okay, I think then all he's asking then for today is that we approve version B as a journal entry?
Yes.
That's why.
We'll do it.
Okay, we think we have it figured out while you were coming up. You're recommending that we pass the regional entry version B and then delay the rest of it.
Right.
Okay. And then wait for the other entity to come.
And put that all together as a different package, but at least this lets them move on to Garrettsville.
That's all that we need to do today.
Right.
Thank you for coming up.
Sure.
Poor Todd. Get comfortable in his seat. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Thanks, Todd. And then the only other thing you have is you're pleased that the agenda, the Sunoco issue, that you had sent a report to the board, just.
Yeah, just journal entry receipt, how's that?
That, the oil sheen?
Yeah, and Denise was already informed about it. And so we should, I gave her a copy of that as well. So I guess there's nothing to a journal entry receipt. Okay. Do you want to make a motion to go in executive session for personnel?
I'll move executive session for personnel.
This will only be about five minutes.
I'll, I'll second that motion. Does he want something tighter, like discipline, higher termination?
It's concerning hiring?
Yes. Maureen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
So as soon as we're ready, I'll ask. I'll have a copy of this for you tomorrow.
Wasn't, wasn't an attempt to do that, though.
Okay, we need a motion to come out?
I'm sorry. I'll move to executive.
Okay, go ahead, you're on now, yes.
Okay.